I'll speak fast. Anything else? Alright, so let's start with planning board stuff. Board business, public input, anybody around? I don't think so. Nope. Board member updates, I'll start. We had a meeting last night about Delisa and I, Marin and
Matthew Nordhaus.
Yes, that's it. I was getting there. I couldn't think of his first name. Oh, now you pop in. Matt, to start our discussions about the overlay we're talking about for the train station area. And we had a great first meeting. Delisa did a great job directing us and
Oh, yeah.
Keeping us off the, um, off the shoals and getting us moving forward. And we have another meeting planned in like two weeks. So that's going well. The 5G bylaw looks like it's all set for town meeting. Town council's kind of gone over it, I guess, like water. So I think we're okay with that. Affordable trust is still plugging away. We have a meeting next week, Marin? Sometime?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, some, yeah. And we're talking about buying, giving some money to the town for the brown property. Looking at, uh, we're still doing the, um, helping out the people that need financial assistance. And looking at maybe getting some developers interested and see about joint projects. We're still plugging away at that. And I think that's all I'm responsible for. I'm good at the, what about everybody else?
That's a lot of stuff, Mark.
I know. And I don't get paid enough, I decided.
It's because you took away my talk about the Littleton Station. So now I have nothing to say.
I started it, you weren't there.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
You could talk about the Littleton Station.
You know why I wasn't there? So this will be my public, or my, um, what I've been doing. So I just got off a call with the, um, Littleton Conservation Trust and the Shade Tree Committee. And they are working on a, putting together a booklet and of, um, trees that they think are appropriate to be planted in Littleton. So by residents, developers, et cetera. Um, ones that are resistant to insects, ones that are drought resistant, you know, that are non-invasive. So, um, they're going to start working on that, which I think is great. You know, it'd be something for us to, some guidance to provide to developers.
Jerry, did you do anything this month, or?
Oh, me?
Yep.
Uh, I mean, other than, you know, the 5G responses and
DDR stuff.
DDR, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, no material changes.
Okay. So that's good with updates. What about minutes?
Just wanted to mention that
Sorry. I'm sure you've got something going on.
Not yet. MPEC, Master Plan Implementation Committee, um, will be meeting on Tuesday, September 29th. So an agenda will go out for that, um, soon, but we needed to get a date put on the calendar.
Cool. Sorry to cut in on you.
So speaking of MPEC, I received an email this morning, um, from, uh, what is her name? The woman who owns the Audiology. Anyways, um, and I told her that I was no longer on the committee and told her that, you know, Cindy was, Anna was, et cetera. So hopefully that's been clarified.
Ah, okay. So it looks like she's the one who sent an email. Yeah. I had reached out to her as well because she was the last person who needed to, to, um, fill out the doodle poll for the meeting. So yeah, I think we're good. Thanks, Delisa.
Okay. Um, anybody look at minutes? Anna, since we have you up there, the minutes, uh, August 20th?
I'm good with them.
Anybody else have any issues with them?
Nope.
Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August 20th as written.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor? Anna?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Delisa?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Marin? You can vote. Alright, I'll say yes to. Okay, we're good. Um, wow, we're flying. Bills and payroll, I did payroll. Uh, do we have any outstanding bills, Marin?
Um, no. No, Green usually sends their bills once a month, so there's usually a flurry.
Are we making money or are we losing money this quarter? Okay, planning board goals and objectives.
Yep.
Uh, there goes, we were on schedule. I guess this is going to blow us off schedule. Go ahead. Who, uh, this was, this was yours, Anna, wasn't it?
So, um, thanks, Mr. Chair. So on July 2nd, um, four out of the five of us, planning board members met to determine goals for this fiscal year, and we approved those on July 9th. From those goals, I worked on behalf of the board with Marin, Nina and Joe Layden on Marin's performance objectives to be brought forward to the planning board for approval, um, hopefully tonight. What Marin sent out though aren't exactly what we discussed during our two meetings on July 10th and 17th. So I'm not really sure why, but, um, I'm thinking that we might want to go ahead and wait until Joe Layden sends us the minutes from those meetings, um, since he's the one who took the minutes.
Okay, so you want to hold off on that until next meeting?
Well, that would be my thought. And I don't know, Marin, would you like to add anything to that?
Um, nope. I think I would just reiterate what you said, that Joe has the notes from the last meeting. So he would be the one to provide the most recent input.
Okay. Alright.
Okay. Alright, so now we have a couple of minutes to fill. Anyone have anything they wanted to share with us or discuss as we move forward next couple of months? I guess I'll tell you, um, no, I'm going with Delisa. You want to kind of give them an idea of what we're talking about for trying to get a, um, bylaw together, an overlay district together for spring town meeting?
For the, no, go ahead.
Well, you, no, no, I stepped on your toes or
No, I don't. You know I don't care. Um, uh, so, well, I guess the first step is we are looking to talk to the surrounding property owners in the, um, around Littleton Station. So I think Cindy, Joe was gonna, since you're on the call, Cindy Napoli, I think Joe was gonna talk to you about that. And I don't want to take up time here, but so we're going to be doing that. Um, and then we've got a whole process kind of mapped out. And as Mark said, we want to ultimately, we're hoping to take this to the town next spring. So it's aggressive, but I think it's, hopefully it's doable.
Yeah, there's four of us on it and we're going to try to meet at least five times to get something ready to bring to the, to the board as a package. And then open, open it up to the public and start public hearings on it, hopefully. I would say early, early, we have to do it early to make sure we want spring town meeting. So yeah, we're looking at the different landowners down there. Also talking to the life care to see about, uh, the possibility of rooting the traffic through life care rather than have all the traffic that this is going to create going down Forest Street. So we're trying to reach out to the owners of life care to try to see if they're, um, uh, would be interested in working something out with us. So I think we're going to look at that early on because that's probably a critical piece.
Yeah.
About infrastructure though, I mean, if you go through with that overlay, the density you're talking about bringing in down there, I mean, are we going to be able to do it without sewer?
Well, obviously the developers are going to have to, um, come up with a system that'll support it. So I would say if you're giving them density, the money's going to be there for that. But, um, I don't know how sewer is gonna, this is going to beat sewer, let's put it that way.
Oh, yeah, you know, I'm sure it will, but I'm just saying, like, is it, if if we're going to do this, is there any blockers beside the bylaw for it not to work?
Well, maybe we talk about maybe doing some sort of mini storage treatment plant down there. You know, as part of it, as they tie into these smaller, I mean, we haven't got that far yet.
Yeah. I mean, we're still
But you're moving fast to May 21, right? So, I mean, you're gonna have to address, you're gonna have to address the blockers somewhere.
Well, either that or whoever's going to be doing the, I mean, you've got to remember, there's a lot of big treatment plants out there now for the buildings that are out there. Um, the only one that doesn't have one is going to be the new buildings that are proposed on the Nordstrom property on those 43 acres.
I know, but Mike, we learned our lesson on that, right? I mean, even, even the schools treatment plant, you only run them at half capacity. I mean, that's what they're designed for. They're not designed to max out. So it's not like, if he's got an extra 35,000 for the, the senior center, that doesn't mean you get that as overage.
Well, like I said, we have, we're still working on the design part of it, the sewer. Obviously it's going to be a component of it, but I don't think we're relying on town sewer to get this to work or not.
So private, still private.
Still private.
Yeah. Yeah, and we also have to decide whether or not we think going with the special permit would be better than 40R. So that's something we're mulling over right now.
You going to engage the MBTA at all?
We know there's no money there. So, but yes, and we, we know that one of the, the landowners has already had some initial conversations. Isn't that what, um, Mark, I think you heard, or?
I think they had told city that they had talked to the, uh, the, um, housing, the housing, the state.
Oh, it was the state, it wasn't MBTA? I think Robert Long has spoken
Well, the MBTA has no money. MBTA not interested in anything. They'll, they'll, um, let you put the park in there, but they don't want to run it, they don't want to buy it, they don't want to put it, no, there's no money for a parking garage, there's no money for their expansion. But they don't have a problem if you expand it behind them and, yeah, they don't, they don't have any money for that.
Are we going to allow our parking garage down there?
It's, I don't think so. It's too expensive. No one's going to want to build it. If the MBTA is going to kick any money and it's too expensive to build a parking garage.
But what about I don't know if I would dismiss that. Eric just built the parking garage for the bike path and it's awesome. I don't know why you would take that off.
Oh, it is, it is awesome, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah.
They doubled, they tripled their parking garage with one parking garage. Why? I don't dismiss that.
Well, I don't think we are. Well, we certainly aren't dismissing it. I think Mark's just stating what his personal opinion is.
Well, I don't know if it's my personal opinion. I think they've already looked at putting the parking garage there and it's too expensive. Who's going to pay for it? And MBTA is not going to put any money in. You know, it's not, um, you know, it, there is a lot of ridership there, but it's, it's a lot cheaper to put a flat piece of ground and then, then to build parking, or parking structures. They're, they're not cheap. You can up on a building above them.
No, but there's an unmet parking need there that is going to, that's going to affect anyone who's developing in that area. And so I think, you know, it's got to be considered. And there is money where the people who pay the, you know, pay the, um, you know
We can surely address it, but I think that's the reason the MBTA wasn't involved, interested in it because there's no money for them. They were not gonna
Well, that doesn't mean
I don't think that's why they're not interested. They just, not their priority.
Well, they just don't have, they, they, so many other problems. But, um, so I don't know, I would just encourage you to consider allowing for, you know
I'm sure we'll put it in there, but it's a question of whether it's going to be financially feasible to build it.
Sure.
We don't care.
I'm just saying, as long as it's not, I mean, right now, I think in our current bylaws, where you can't put a parking garage somewhere.
If you remember last year, um, we had a special guest speaker who was, um, I think from the MBTA with a strategic plan. And if they want to be able to create, um, a lot of frequency here at the Littleton Station, then what kind of dollars are they going to be able to provide to the town to help support that? So I don't know, getting back in touch with, with her would be a good step to at least understand where the MBTA is, especially with everything that's happened with COVID.
That's a good point. We should at least reach out to them to see. Maybe things have changed since last year, whether there is money available though.
Right.
I think you should aggressively court the state. And I don't know who does that on our behalf, but somebody should court the state, especially with housing. I mean, if we're going to have significant affordable housing components, complete streets, all the stuff that they've asked us to do over the years that we cooperate with. I mean, if we're going to be transforming the downtown, we should make sure it's funded, that we get what we want.
Well, and I think also because we're talking about transit oriented, um, housing and, and mixed use. I mean, it's everything the state and the governor is looking for. We certainly have some, I think, some, some clout there. So
Sure. Well, well
Yeah, but that's, that's a job for somebody. I mean, who, who does that on our behalf? Like, who's going to advocate?
We're going to have to get the selectmen to get involved. The old days, Keith would have been right on it, but we don't have Keith anymore. So last ask Joe and see if he can reach out to the, um, to our representatives and, uh, MBTA.
So it would be the man, I mean, the manager would do that. When we get a new town manager, they could
Or we could have Joe do it in the interim. Because we're, you know, we're moving, we're meeting every two weeks on this, so that's, that's an answer that we should actually, it's a good idea. We should look at that. We should knock that out of the box right off the bat.
Marin, do you want, can you touch base with Joe tomorrow on that?
Yes.
And let me know if you need my help on anything?
Certainly.
Okay, are we, um, do we have anyone for the 6:50 or we just doing it remotely through Zoom?
Um, I think David Fieldsend is, um, prepared to, uh, discuss the A and R.
Okay, now we, um
That's correct.
I think it's 6:50. Does anyone else think it's 6:50?
It's 6:47.
Does anybody watching us? Do we got any participants?
Uh, 26 people.
Oh, God. There must be nothing on TV tonight.
You got 26 participants?
No, we don't. How many participants?
26 is on the zone.
Wow, this. Wow.
So, Mr. Fieldsend, would you care to, um, share your screen or do we want me to share the A and R?
Um, if you can, I can as well, but if you would like to.
I'd be happy to.
Um, right, so this is a, an A and R plan. My name is David Fieldsend, by the way, from Landplex, civil engineering and surveying. Matt Hammer was going to be here, but he had a conflict with another planning board. Amesbury, but, uh, I'm filling in for him. Uh, this is a lot line adjustment of an A and R plan that was previously approved in 2017. And it's my understanding that the lot line was shifted around the existing septic system for the Q12 with on a lot 1C, uh, as a condition of approval from Noshova Board of Health for the approval of the septic system for lot 1D. They wanted the lot lines to be, the septic system to be completely within the lot lines of the existing, um, lot. So we shifted the lot lines to accommodate that. They, both lots have the same frontage, they both have sufficient area and they both conform to the heat factor. And, uh, I guess, uh, Norris Environmental has been out, uh, to confirm the wetland location has not changed. Uh, I think they were out in the end of July. Otherwise, it's a fairly straightforward lot line adjustment. If the board has any questions or any concerns I can answer?
Well, what's the delta? What are you asking us to improve?
Uh, it's just a lot line adjustment where you can see that the old lot line is that dash line that ran through the existing septic system. And the new lot line is shifted, thank you. The new lot line is shifted around the existing septic system and that's, that's, that's the only change.
That's the ask.
That's the ask, yes.
Thank you.
No problem. And, uh, there's a share, uh, common driveway that was granted special permit approval when this lot was originally bid from A and
But that's not part of your ask?
No, that is not. That already exists.
So walk off, Mark. Let's go.
Um, yeah, so the only, the only change would be shifting that lot line around the septic system that is currently there. I guess, uh, Nishova didn't want to grant a variance for having the septic system, you know, buttoning lot.
But it doesn't otherwise impact your ratios. It doesn't impact your frontage. It's simply a shift.
That's correct. It, it, it obviously impacts the shape factor, but it still conforms. Um, the frontage comes to the exact same point, so it does not affect the frontage. It's just two, two existing lots that were shifting the, uh, lot line around the existing system at the request of Nishova Board of Health.
Were there any other concerns raised during the filing?
During the filing with Nishova?
No, with us.
Oh, with us. Uh, previously in, in the end of 2017, I'm, I'm not sure. I guess maybe
No, for this particular application, there's no, there were no concerns raised at the time of filing, right?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Is this, is this going to be a mounted system? Is it gonna, is the grading going to affect the lot lines on at least the back lot line?
Uh, I believe it is going to be a mounted system, but the grading, uh, the system was approved from Nishova. Uh, the grading is going to be, you know, farther than five feet below lot line, is my understanding, as, as required. And, uh, their, their only, or their condition was that the existing lot line or the existing septic system is contained entirely within that.
Okay. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. Anyone else?
I just want to understand what we're asked. I'm, I'm like with Jerry. So this, these two lots have been approved and then in the process of going to the, uh, Nishova Board of Health, they asked you to change the lot lines, is it? So it's not that, it's not that we're approving the idea of two lots, it's just their configuration based on the Board of Health input. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, uh, the two lots are already in existence and it's just a matter of, um, to do what Nishova Board of Health wants us to do is to, they prefer to not have to grant a variance for having the septic system over the lot line.
Why do you need variance for that? We don't, we allow shared septic in Littleton. Why, why is that even an issue?
Uh, it's going to be a separate, separate system. We're just, and, and we were just trying to appease what their requests were. And, and we took a look and found out that it was achievable. We were concerned that possibly the shape factor wouldn't comply, but it does.
So you don't have to, what would it take to have a shared septic between two lots?
I'm sorry, I missed that?
Well, if, if you have a shared septic between two lots, you're going to need an agreement between the two lot owners. In this case, you wouldn't need that anymore, but it's not really a health board or health requirement because we allow it. I guess is my point. I don't know why Nishova would say that, since we already have precedent for it in Littleton.
I guess what I would ask is, um, because that is the, uh, pressure point that is causing this change is if the letter from Nishova Board of Health can be attached to the application, that would be helpful.
That can be, definitely be done.
And do you also have a drawing that shows the shape factor of the other lot?
Is it on this plan? Actually, it should be on the plan.
Yeah, I don't know if it has the shape factor of the previously approved lot. This is the shape factor of
So I see you have this information, shape factor, point, 43, wow, okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Now, actually, so this, this is the existing house, right? It's already there?
That's correct.
So we shouldn't, we probably shouldn't have approved it in the first place with the lot line where it was because it was cutting right through the septic system.
Was that a new septic system?
No, that's the existing system, right?
Oh, I thought he was going to mount, I just knew, right? He's going to be mounting it.
The, the new one on the lot, on the new lot is going to be mounted.
Right, but this, this is this is the existing house and this is the
That's his draw?
Right?
That's correct.
So we shouldn't have approved it this way. We probably didn't even know there was a septic system there. We couldn't have approved a lot line going to an existing septic system. We shouldn't have approved it as it was in the first place.
What do you mean? I mean, unless you, unless you, that's on the original as built, I don't, is that, is that the case? Was that drawing that way it was in 2017?
Yeah. That's the point I'm getting at. At 2017, this line, that line went right, that diagonal line went right through the septic system. We shouldn't have approved this in the first place. You're saying, uh, we were not told that there was septic system there.
But so what? It doesn't matter. I mean
That does matter.
Why? You can't undo a previous mistake. You can't look back.
Well, we should have. We should have looked at this and said, you can't, you can't put a lot line through a septic system. Show us where both, he would have had to show us where that system was going to go, that lot line. Um, it's a moot point now because we're fixing
Regardless, you already approved it.
We shouldn't have approved it because we didn't know the septic was there.
Doesn't matter if you should have, you
It does matter. It absolutely does matter. You can't put a lot line through a septic, through an existing septic system. There's no easements there for the use of the system over there. None of it was done. My point is, I have no problem approving this to fix a problem that we have, but it shouldn't have been done this way. We shouldn't have had that line going right through an existing septic system.
That's different, but as a matter of order, you can't undo an old decision.
It's only three years old. Whoever did it the first time did not, did not make us aware when we signed it that there was a septic system going through that lot line.
On the plan
Mr. Muntner, uh, Matt Hammer, the engineer, the other engineer is, is present?
Yes, hello, everyone. My name's Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering. That septic system was shown on the original A and R. And what we did was we provided a easement around that septic system.
Yeah.
And that, that easement around the septic system, um, was not enough for Nishova Associated Boards of Health. And they requested that we put the lot line around instead of the septic being encompassed by an easement. But it was shown on the prior plan.
Well, there you go. Let me, did I sign this?
Yes.
I did? Okay, never mind. I don't know if we were made aware, but I'm going to take the fifth
That is beautiful, Mark.
No, but we, we did show the system on the prior A and R.
Wow. Yeah. Right.
Sorry, David, I just, I was able to jump on, so I'll let you handle it from here.
Yeah, not at all.
So regardless, we're fixing a situation we probably shouldn't have done in the first place. So I, I have no problem. Anyone else have any other questions on this?
No. It, it's good to know that, Mark. And, you know, most of us weren't on the board at that time, but it's good to know for the future.
This was done, when was it done? 17?
17.
November 2017.
Okay.
Good.
Alright.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve the A and R as presented to us.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor? Anna?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Delisa?
Yes.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, whoa, we're right on time. We have a 7 o'clock, continue public hearing, 30, 336, 338 King Street. Senior Residential Development and Acre for Waters resource district special permit, Hager Homestead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Douglas DeShane representing Massachusetts Housing, Co-Housing LLC. Um, just quickly, I'd like to introduce our team. Bruce Ringwall from GPR, Diane Loomis from Massachusetts Co-Housing, Matt Blackham, our development consultant, and Sheldon Penneyer and Renee Fair are architects. Um, the team has put together a relatively short, um, PowerPoint presentation as a guide for our discussion tonight. And, um, I'd like to start off, I'll, I'll handle the beginning of it. Uh, Mr. Ringwall will jump in for a few slides. I got a couple more and then, um, I'll turn things over to Sheldon to discuss architecture. So if I could, um, this is our, our proposal, the Hager Homestead. Bruce, can we, uh, jump to the next one? Great.
Um, the buzzer wasn't working.
No worries. Thank you very much. Um, as the board knows, this is a proposed, uh, senior residential development under Littleton Senior Residential Development bylaw. Um, I'll remind the board that the stated purpose of your bylaw is to provide for a variety of housing types, settings and residential services to meet the needs of people as they age and people with disabilities. The bylaw's primary objective, as we understand it, is to create housing options for seniors with programming that benefits the lives of seniors as they age in place in Littleton. And as we all know, uh, there is certainly a condition of the bylaw which requires affordable units. And as we all know, there is certainly a condition of the bylaw which requires affordable units. I'd like to propose to the board that the Hager Homestead project meets the purpose, intent, and requirements of your senior residential bylaw. The residences and the proposed uses, in fact, will offer a variety of housing types, settings, and residential services to meet those needs. Hager Homestead also meets the housing objectives of the town of Littleton by, first of all, creating affordable units for seniors, preserving open space, and diversifying Littleton's housing stock. The Hager Homestead Project RET presents, as we've discussed, a community approach to senior housing. Our physical design of the project offers a mix of duplexes, townhouses, and what we've referred to as independent living units. All of our units, except for one, are single level. The one-two-story unit we have, however, has a master suite on the main level, so they all offer first-floor level sleeping. The project will be able to allow its residents to age in place in their units. Our floor plans do enable wheelchair access and maneuverability for handicapped folks within the units. Now, as we've discussed, a senior co-housing community is an intentional community. Like an old-fashioned neighborhood, the residents of the community are committing to social engagement in that they will participate in the community for the mutual benefit of the community and their neighbors. The space and programmed activities within the project will support the community. Our members have committed, or the members and owners in the project will commit to build relationships with each other. They will promise mutual support to combat social isolation that the elderly face as they age in place. Community support and community relationships in these types of neighborhood actually have been shown to decrease the burden and the cost to Littleton seniors on social services. So while being a community approach, it also provides these benefits to our seniors. And again, the proposal meets the town's housing production plan by providing affordable units, units with minimal upkeep and maintenance, and amenities for our seniors, which I'll talk about in a sec, and a community that will satisfy Littleton seniors' desire for camaraderie. Again, a very, very key point to this co-housing is the fact that this will create and develop a neighborhood and neighbors that will live together and work together and socialize. The project is clustered, small, relatively small privately-owned residences, which we will organize as condominium, and that allows us to preserve open space. The seniors will be near each other in their homes, on the paths around their homes, and in the common gardens that we propose. We are proposing accessible walking paths and meadow trails, which will allow the residents to meet and interact with their neighbors as well as the public, as we are providing a public trail through the meadow. As you recall, our cars, driveways, and parking are all placed on the periphery of the project so as to allow the neighborhood and the living units to be clustered together and to keep the parking and the cars away from that cluster, yet in a convenient location on the periphery of the project. The common house, which we have certainly proposed as a major component and certainly a key asset to this project, will provide an opportunities for seniors to share meals, hold meetings, pick up their mail. It will provide a space for hobbies, exercise, storage, and certainly special events, whether that might be music, art, educational programs, or other entertainment. We are proposing, within the community, planned activities, things like movie night, games, and excursions for our community. They'll all be part of the community program of this project. Common spaces that we're providing will help supplement the space which in... Within... Help supplement space for each of the units. As we've proposed, our building plans are for high-energy-efficient development and eco-friendly units that will help keep the operating and maintenance costs of the project low. I spoke of a variety of housing types. Recall, we are proposing two-family dwellings, which there'll be six of those units located in three buildings. We will have one townhouse building, which will provide three townhouse-style units. And again, within the larger building, we will propose fifteen smaller units, which, again, we have referred to as our independent living units. Again, the project has an emphasis on community. We are providing a variety of settings, accessible walkways, the meadow, the views from the meadow, community gardens and barn, community greens, and gathering outdoor areas. And of course, we have... We'll have pedestrian-friendly sidewalks on King Street that will allow our residents direct walking access to the library, senior center, and downtown amenities. We are proposing to provide a variety of residential services within the project. The common house facilities will be used for dining, community activities and events, as I just stated, as well as the shared kitchen. It will have elevator... It will be elevator... It will be accessible and have elevator access. And one thing that we've mentioned is that the community would hope and expects to interact with the senior... The senior population in town in general by inviting them to participate in programs and to utilize our common house and some of the amenities there. So we expect that that common house will become an asset not only to our residents, but the senior community at large. We are providing security, grounds maintenance, and again, both indoor and outdoor shared areas. So, that gives you just a quick overview of the concept behind the proposal and how we believe it squarely meets the purpose and intent of not only your senior residential bylaw, but your housing production plan in general and the town's master plan. At this point, I'd ask Bruce to just jump in and take over. He has some technical information to present.
Good evening. The project as designed is a low-density use. The project fits well within the senior residential development bylaw guidelines, which we'll go over in a moment. The density, the height, the open space have all been respected and fall well within the allowed limits of the bylaw. From a density standpoint, based on the guidelines of the bylaw, a two-family units, you can have four per acre, we're proposing six, which would require a minimum of 1.5 acres. We have one townhouse building with three units. There are allowed to be eight per acre, so that means that with our three units, we need a little over a third of an acre. Based on the independent living, a twenty units per acre. Looking at a multifamily building, multi-story building, we have fifteen units taking three-quarters. So from a minimum land space area, we need 2.6 acres, and we're providing 15.17. From an open space standpoint, we're looking at the whole site with 15.17 acres. And the amount of the site that is necessary based on this 2.65 is 3.76 acres. This project could be done on 3.76 acres from a zoning coverage standpoint. But using the fifteen acres, and at thirty percent of that, we have a requirement for four and a half acres of open space. We're providing greater than thirteen acres of open space. The upland area within that, or the... Reverse that. I'm gonna go to the bottom line first. The bylaw states that there's just no more than twenty percent of that required area can be wetlands. So twenty percent of five, of four and a half acres is .91 acres. We have a much more area than that that is wetlands because we have much more upland area than that, than our open space. So we have nine point four acres of wetlands. All the wetlands of the entire site are within the open space. The upland is the inverse of that requirement, and the upland is required eighty percent of compact... Not compact, but of contiguous upland usable area, and that's three point six acres. And we're providing 3.68 acres in the way we have this broken out. That's not including the area in the middle of the common. It's not including other upland areas that the trails connect to. And those that have been on the site feel that a lot of the wetland area, it's mostly dry and meadow, is upland area. So there's a lot more there than just that wetland line you see when you look at the plan.
Bruce, can I interrupt you for a second? Mark, did we not already hear this presentation?
Wrapping up, we're summing up. You know, we're trying to show you what's here and where we're at. We're just about done.
No, but I really like to hear what's new from the last time we met.
Coming in the next little section. So our development's all right down at the front of the property in this little area that we have. We're providing an easement for the connection between the town properties on either side of the parcel. And our parking, you know, we're going by the units. We're providing eight guest spaces for... One for every three of the twenty-four units. And that's forty-one spaces. We're providing forty-two.
Bruce, thank you. I'll jump back in and address what's new since we last spoke. Since we last spoke, we have been addressing what we believe were the two biggest concerns articulated by the board. One having to do with affordability. The board has commented to us that they would like to see a greater degree of affordability. And also, we have had questions from the planning board concerning the multi-family... Excuse me, multi-story building and a requirement that it conform to Form-Based Design Code under the town's regulations. With respect to affordability, we have modified our proposed affordable unit proposal in increasing the quantity of units in the eighty percent of area median income and the hundred percent AMI category. We have now proposed to provide two units at add or less than eighty percent, and you can see those under the updated proposal at 205,000. We are proposing two units at a hundred percent of AMI, one a one-bedroom and one a two-bedroom, so those prices are reflected as 275 and 306 respectively. And then we are continuing to propose a two-bedroom unit at a hundred and twenty percent and a second two-bedroom at a hundred and fifty percent. That remains unchanged. I'd remind the board that prior to the latest changes to your senior residential bylaw, it was required that ten percent of your total project units be at or below eighty percent AMI as the sole affordability requirement. The Hager Homestead project is currently offering two units at that level, which represents nine percent of our units. And as we've committed, both of those eighty percent units, which would be counted on the town's affordable housing inventory, will be offered as local choice units, so they will be offered first to Littleton residents. Again, we are proposing four additional units as defined under your bylaw, and they are, as again, two at a hundred, one at 120, and one 150. This proposal, this current proposal of affordable units reflects a subsidy of the project of over a million dollars in order to provide those levels of affordability. And as we've discussed, that subsidy is, in fact, driving our market rate prices, but we have tried to balance keeping the market rate prices reasonable while at the same time offering the most we can with respect to affordability. I do want to talk just briefly here about the market rate units because we have been presenting prior that our market rate units would have an average price in the low 500s. And I know the board has had concerns about that, whether in fact, you know, the market rate units will fill a need in the senior community and whether they will be affordable, not in terms of affordability, lower-income affordability, but rather just affordable to seniors. So what we've done is provide you a breakdown so that you can see that, you know, all of our market rate units are not in the $500,000 range, but in fact, all... Forty-six percent of all of the units in the project and fifty percent of all new units. You'll recall, there are currently two residential units on the site, so we really are proposing to add twenty-two units. Of those twenty-two units, over half will be under $500,000, and we've provided you that information. We'll have three units between 200 and 300. We'll have two units between 300 and 400, six between four and five, and then the remaining thirteen will be just over 500. With respect to architecture and project design, I'm going to turn things over to Sheldon Penneyer, our architect on the project, and he will explain why we... Explain to you what we've done anew with respect to architecture since we last met. So, Sheldon?
Good evening. Thank you, Doug. So what I'd like to do is to present to you tonight where we are with the design of the multi-story building and how it relates to King Street. And we've made substantial changes from the very beginning. I'm gonna actually share with you the elevation that was brought before the board at our first hearing and show you where it is now. The current design is taking the Form-Based Code, which was brought up by the board, the desire for us to look at the Form-Based Code, and also to respond to members of the Historic Commission and members of the community on their feeling about the architecture as seen from King Street. The elevation that you see at the top of the page is what we came in in the beginning with. There, we were presenting a design that was more neutral. And what we did then, in a series of iterations, is what you see at the bottom of the page is where we are today. The drawing at the top actually had some iterations on it where we had the break in the building as it went from the bottom of King Street up toward the top. But the current design is implementing, is taking into consideration the scale of the Hager Homestead and presenting the gable ends on the street. And that was something that was requested by members of the community and by, actually, a member of the Historic Commission. There were iterations where we had balconies, but we had a meeting with two members of that committee or commission last week, both Jonathan and Linda, who suggested that we remove the balconies from the design and we look at the projecting gable end being articulated from the rest of it by shifting the scale of the clavards. So what we are coming with you today is this revised design that we feel very well represents the intent of the Form-Based Code. If you go to the next slide, Bruce. This diagram is taken from your draft copy of the Form-Based Code, and on the right-hand side is our... Is the... Our building that shows the articulation along King Street, which is the bottom of the page. The diagrams on the left show how it suggests you take building volumes and break them up. And that's what we feel we've done. They shift in and out, as you can see, from the street. There's a shift in that and articulated through, and then there's an actual sightline through between the buildings. So, we also feel that the... And we also can show from this elevation, this conforms to the two-and-a-half-story regulation in the Form-Based Code by taking the eaves or the gables of the new structure and bringing them down equal to the eve on the Hager Homestead. We are showing a two-and-a-half-story. It's actually a half a story that's exposed or underground, and then a full story, and then another half a story within the roof. Want to go to the next? Want to go to the next? Um, the, 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 um, slide at the top is showing what is there today. Uh, there has been some, um, uh, comments made about, um, the open view. What we're showing here is the new building versus what's existing. And, um, what you'll notice is on the left-hand side of the Hager Homestead, there's a large fence line now that blocks the entire view through to the meadows. That will be eliminated, uh, as the pool is eliminated. So we're picking up more views on that side of the building as you approach the church. And you can see the church is to the left of that area that provides the view. So at the bottom, um, is our new proposed site. Um, we trust that you'll find it, it, it responds to many of the comments made. Um, and we feel that we've worked hard to, to honor and respect the comments that were given to us while maintaining the integrity of this design that we're putting forward. So with that, um, I think I will, um, wrap it up and, and say thank you for, um, allowing this time to present and to summarize this. And I guess, Chairman, you can open it up to questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, have any questions?
Um, I have a question.
I mean, how do you want to go through this, Mike? You want to take the affordability first? I mean, I think we should do this one at a time. Take the affordability and then talk about the architecture.
Okay. Do you want to start? You want, why don't you start then, Jerry?
Well, I, I don't think the affordability meets the spirit of the bylaw at all. Right? It's pretty, it's a rich project. So I'm not even sure they're using the right bylaw here. Does it need to be under senior housing bylaw? I don't know. Architecturally, I don't want a mass building up front. It's going to block the entire view. Taking away a fence doesn't alleviate that. I walk by that place almost every day. You mass a building up there, you won't see the field behind it. I don't think we're getting anything in return from an affordability standpoint. It's, it's a, even the affordability progression, 80, 100, 120, 150. I don't think that's good enough for the spirit of the bylaw. It's not addressing affordable housing for seniors, in my opinion. I don't like, and I also don't like the massing up front. So with those two items, I'm not going to support this. Okay?
Okay, I'm going to speak. I am going to fully support this because I disagree with you, Jerry. I think that it meets in every single way the spirit of the bylaw that was written. It meets the needs of seniors. We've, um, we've done a lot of research on what seniors are looking for. This meets every single one of them.
You're going to have to call.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
Oh, excuse you.
No, Jerry, 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 let me finish speaking.
One at a time. Jerry, let her speak and then you can respond.
In terms of the, in terms of the view, what we do gain is view from the back of the project. Right now, if you, if we, it will connect, we will have a trail that will connect the, the, uh, library to Castle in the Trees that will be accessible to everybody. I love that. I also am very interested in hearing from Cindy Napoli, who has joined us here, who is Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, because I believe she has some, um, some thoughts on the affordability.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, you were gonna, you were gonna say something before, um, we started?
I, um, I think that there was a substantial effort made on the part of the applicant to address our concerns. Um, I don't believe that this project should be or could be a poster child for our senior housing bylaw. Um, because it's a small project. It's 20-some units. And, um, I think that to put our hopes and dreams for truly affordable senior housing on this particular project is misplaced. So I, I am a little more interested in some of the further discussions there have been about, you know, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust participating in this. Um, I don't know what the product, you know, what the, the status of that is. Regarding the architecture, it's an improvement. Um, I, I don't, I, I, I agree with both Jerry and Delisa. Yes, it will, um, affect the view in some parts of the frontage to the back. But you know what? That back meadow is not open to the public now. And I've walked it and it's pretty cool. And I know people who use the, the trail from the, uh, school campus up to Shattuck Street and are very excited about having a potential connection, um, across that meadow for loop or circle or, you know, Castle in the Trees. I, I think it's, it's something, it's a significant thing that can knit together that island in the middle of our town where we have school campus, we have our civic buildings. Um, and to, to sort of, in the middle of it is this, uh, big, huge meadow that's not open to the public. And that's going to address that. So while, you know, I don't know if we're being asked to support this or not support this today, I'm, I'm getting more and more comfortable with it.
Anna, are you?
So, um, I have three different points I'd like to make. Um, the first one related to the senior residential bylaw. Uh, 173, 151A1 says, "The proposed senior housing development will not have adverse effects that outweigh its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site." "The characteristics of this site are the open vista and the feral house, and the proposal is to build a three-story structure." "So the applicant's plan converts a 15-acre site with wide-open vista into a three-acre site that is overwhelmed by the new structure to the detriment of the existing historical home and causing the view to disappear forever." We're not going to get that back. On September 2nd, the applicant received input, as they said, from the Historical Society. Um, the Historical Society met prior to this meeting and they will provide their input. "The only other housing structure that I can think of that is this large and contiguous is Village Green." "And that one is set way back, away from the main street, not on the main thoroughfare, right next to Town Hall." So that's my first point. Um, my second one is regarding the inclusionary housing. "The application, even with the amendment, still stands at only six units." "The inclusionary range is from 50 down to 25%." "The original intent was to try to get as many affordable units as possible." "And the applicant knew this. The applicant knew about this information going back to November and December when we had two informal meetings with them. So this should not have been to any, any surprise." "And I know that I personally told them that this was not going to be negotiable, that we were looking for the most number of affordable units possible."
Yep.
"So the figures provided by the applicant do not provide affordability in the 60 to 80% AMI range, which is what I understood to really be affordable."
Yep.
"Now, there's some discussion about a buy-down of additional, um, AMI from the 100% down to 60 or 80. But Littleton shouldn't have to pay a developer to do what is already required by the bylaw."
That's right.
"So the third point I have is that, and these are based off the numbers that Bruce had up earlier. This parcel has 9.41 acres of wetland in the 15 acres total. That's 60% of the parcel is wetland. Based on the bylaw, there should be less than one acre for the whole site." Now, they can do the math, funny math, any way they want. But the bottom line to it is that the acreage of wetlands is 10 times the amount of what it should be, based on what we wanted. Because if you recall, what we wanted was to be able to have a senior residential development with open space where seniors could do things on, with very little wetlands. Because wetlands restricts what is possible to do on the very, on the particular property. We, um, one of the other concerns that I have is that three and a half of the cottages and a barn are planned to be in the 50 to 100, 100-foot buffer zone. So given the amount of wetlands, these buildings require fill, and we are cautioned by the peer review on this. Additionally, on August 24th, Conn's Comm questioned, well, during their meeting, whether the planning board was concerned about this development being right up to the 50-foot line. So I'm concerned, and I'm concerned about the threat to the water quality for future homeowners and vice versa, the wetlands being contaminated by the development, both during and after the build-out. So based on the criteria of this application against our bylaws, it doesn't benefit Littleton. And I will not, and I am not in favor of this. "The concept of housing is new to Littleton, and it is appreciated that we are presented with a new type of housing. But this location with this plan is trying to shoehorn a square peg into a round hole." Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, well, I'll, I'll weigh in too, on both the affordability. I, I don't see 20 units at $400,000 for garden-style units affordable. I, yeah, we're, if we're going to give you the higher density, we need them. We need them down into the six, all of them down into the 60 to 80, um, percent range. The, not the 150, which is what they're asking, um, for the density you're getting. And I, I agree with Jeff. It is a small project. But the percentage that should be not, I'm not talking about the affordable units. I'm talking the regular units. They should still be less than $400,000. For a garden-style, one or, one or two-bedroom garden-style unit, they should be less than $400,000. I'm sorry, it's, it's still too expensive. It's not, it's not in keep, keeping with what the seniors can afford. Um, and why are we doing this? I, I guess I agree with Anna. Why are we doing this? If, if there's not a benefit to the seniors that are in town now that need a place to live that's affordable, not the six, six units that are going to be affordable, the rest of them that go along with it. Uh, as far as the architecture goes, I agree. It's a big space. Um, it does block out everything behind it. Um, I think they've done the best they could, given what they have to deal with. They're trying to put, as Anna put it, try to shoehorn it in there. They're going to have a big box there, so. I think they've done the best they can with that. Um, I'm not so concerned about that as I am the fact that we're putting 24 units and we're not getting affordable unit that is below, most of them are not below $400,000, unless they're the six units they have to do it there. So I don't see a reason to, given the increased density, we're not getting the, the, the cost that goes, that should be, uh, coordinated with that. So that's mine. Um, um, does any, is there anyone? Uh, Ma, do we have anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this?
Hmm, I can't raise my hand.
You can't raise your hand?
I, I can't figure out how to do it, but I'd like to speak if I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Cindy Napoli?
Yeah, this is Cindy Napoli. I am, uh, I reside at 47 Springfield Drive. I am also co-chair of the Littleton Affordable Housing Trust and currently the chairperson of the Littleton Select Board. Um, I have been, uh, working on the Affordable Housing Trust now for a couple of years. Have been following this project very closely. I had a meeting with Mr. Deschain and Mr. Blackman, myself and Bartlett Harvey, who is the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, just to educate ourselves a little bit more about this project. And, um, honestly, it was very insightful and very helpful to me to really understand this project. And I have to, um, begin by disagreeing with a lot of the comments made, um, by members of the planning board this evening regarding this project and, um, the assertion that it will not benefit the town of Littleton. It provides, um, many aspects that will benefit senior citizens. It is a senior affordable, I mean, it's a senior residential development. The affordability component to it is a bonus. Um, that was something that was written in, uh, when the planning board amended the bylaws. Last year, it was brought before the town of Littleton. The voters approved the bylaw as written. It's not, in my mind, an affordable housing bylaw, which is something very different. I think, uh, based upon the revised figures provided by the developer, it will benefit senior citizens, uh, in Littleton. It will ben- benefit senior citizens. Um, you know, not only from the affordable price point, but also because of the concept of the project itself. The location is ideal, uh, to begin with, the common areas, the amenities, um, that will be provided in the common house, the camaraderie it will bring, the, um, benefit to the, uh, community as a whole. If it becomes a gathering place, they can partner with the Council on Aging. Uh, many seniors right now are, you know, facing isolation, especially due to the pandemic. You know, and I look, I'm going to use my parents as an example. My father's got severe disability. They still live in their house on Elizabeth Street. And man, would it be wonderful if they lived at a, in a place like this? My mother could go visit my brother in California and not have to worry so much about my father. Um, if they had that type of, um, camaraderie, that type of living, living, um, arrangement. With respect to the open space component, um, that Anna mentioned, I have to be honest with you. I look at the wetlands, I look at the map, you know, seniors, there's plenty of open space there for them to utilize. They're not going to go way out into the meadow, uh, and utilize, you know, that much open space. I think it's perfectly adequate what's being provided for them. The walking path that is being proposed from Town Hall through to Castle in the Trees is a huge benefit. It's something that the, uh, Select Board has been wanting to see, um, come to fruition for a few years now. I'm very, very pleased to see that incorporated into this project. Uh, with respect to the affordable, um, component of it, the way I'm reading the bylaw, I don't see how they're not meeting the affordable, uh, requirements requested in the bylaw, the way it's written. And maybe I'm missing something. Uh, but I think that the units that they are proposing are spot-on, uh, the way that it's been revised. Two at 80% AMI, uh, two at 100% AMI, one at 120% and one at 150% are certainly beneficial to, um, to the town and to, uh, anybody looking for a, a housing unit in that price range. And I just wanted to ask if you, if you don't mind, what are, what's the square footage of the market rate units? Um, or rather the affordable units? Mr. Deschain, if someone could answer for me what the square footage of the market rate units are, please?
Sheldon, do you want to answer that?
Uh, Renee, do you want to, um, you have the numbers in front of you?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Uh, if there are one-bedroom units, they are, I apologize, I have some.
750?
Echoing where I am. Uh, they're approximately 700 square feet.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the two-bedroom units are 50 to 875.
Now, there's, there's a wide range.
Oh, Diane, please, go ahead.
50 to 900 square feet. And the, uh, two-bedrooms, uh, range from just over 1,000 square feet to almost 1,350 square feet. There is one unit, uh, that pre-exists on the site, uh, that's being retrofitted, that's 1,500 and change. Um, but the ranges of the one-bedrooms are between, are in, are in the mid 700 square feet and they grow to about 900. Uh, the two-bedrooms range from just over 1,000 square feet to 1,350.
So let's clarify the assertion then. So you're charging what on 900 square feet?
So, uh, Mr. Portanti, I'm not done yet, please. I just, if you don't, I'm, I apologize if you just don't mind. So looking at Jones Meadow as an example, um, the cottages that were built at Jones Meadow that are in the 500,000 range, um, they're not much bigger than the units that are being proposed with this development. So I don't know why.
I mean, let's get a number. What is, what's much bigger?
No, they're about 1,200, 1,300 square feet for the cottages built at Jones Meadow. That's pretty similar to the two and three-bedroom units that are being built at this development.
What about the ones?
It's what, it's, what, Jerry?
What are the size of the ones at Cooper?
They're around 1,200 to 1,300 square feet.
I think we need to check that number.
Well, you can check the number. I'm just telling you, I don't think that the price point on these are that off. It's what the market will bear in Littleton, uh, you know, and I just, and, you know, so we can argue about the, the cost of the market rate units and whatnot.
But Cindy, I see the material. I think they're 1,700 square feet and that, that's twice the amount.
Okay, so regardless, Jerry, all right, so maybe that is correct.
So if you, but you're making an assertion that this.
No, but let me finish my point, please. So with this development comes, there's a lot of amenities built in with this development. You have the common area house, you have the location. It's right in the, I mean, I think the location is ideal. It's right in the, I mean, I think the location is ideal, it's next to the library, it's next to Town Hall, there's a cafe across the street. Um, people can walk out the front door and you have a sidewalk right there that can take you uptown. There's so many benefits to this project and I really am, I, you know, I'm, I'm sad to just see it, um, kinda dismissed at this point. I think that the developers have put a lot of time and effort into this. I think it's a new concept that could actually be really beneficial to the community. And I'd hate to see us miss out on this opportunity, I don't know what more we're looking for that we think's gonna be better coming down the road, to be honest with you. Uh, the way the bylaw is written and, and what they have incorporated definitely works with the town. Um, and if it's more, you know, it's not an affordable housing, uh, project, it's a senior development project. Certainly, we, the Affordable Housing Trust has already had discussions with the developers, more than happy to work with them, I know that there's a grant opportunity that we can apply for as a housing choice community that helps set, offset some of the costs of this project, there's a lot of potential here. Um, but I just think that, you know, we really need to kind of step back and again, the way the bylaw is written, the way I'm reading it, they meet all of the requirements, so I don't know, uh, you know, what else they can possibly do to, to, um, get the, the, uh, remaining members of the planning board on board with this project.
And Mark, may I say something, Mark?
Sure.
You know, I, I frankly am stunned that, that there's any opposition to this development. I, you know, I think what Cindy said, and I'm not gonna reiterate it, but when I look at these other developments that were passed by some of the members of this planning board that don't have nearly the number of amenities that seniors have requested. And here we finally got what, what everybody was looking for with, you know, with, with Cooper, with the, not with Cooper, with, um, Jones Meadow, with the field development, I mean, here we've got all this stuff that seniors will actually want. You know, and in terms of water quality, I mean, look, if we're really, we were that concerned about water quality, we would have paid a lot more attention to Jones Meadow and Spectacle Pond. So.
I, I come back to the price, we're looking at an apartment We're looking, oh, let's put this to bed and vote on it. Um, I, I, I don't like this discussion at all, I don't like that other board members come up here and make assertions without backing them up. I don't like the fact that there's board members here making assertions without backing it up with facts.
May I speak?
Take a vote on it and put it Jerry, stop. Go ahead Jeff.
I can't believe the arrogance of board members who are asserting that they know what a senior may or may not want to live in. This is a completely unique community. It's going, it's not going to attract everyone, it's not going to attract people who would go into these other uh, developments you've mentioned, who aren't, you know, who aren't necessarily even attracting seniors. This is specifically, it's a bespoke project to completely satisfy a small group of people and let them decide where to put their money. I don't think it's the, listen, we're not in the business of development, we're in the business of trying to shape community, uh, community housing options, this is a really unique option. Now, I do understand
Let, let me respond to that, I, I totally agree with you. I'm just saying this project doesn't fit inside this bylaw. Most certainly does, I'm sorry, I've been sitting back, but it most certainly does, you need That's great, I'm not having a debate with you, this is a debate among the board, I, I'm talking to you. No, it's not, we're not in deliberations, we're talking about, it's an open hearing Jerry. Go ahead, we're, right now, we're having a discussion among the board. I, I, it, it comes back down to what we've, we've seen in the past and what's before us now, I think we're all a little apprehensive about what we got before because we didn't get anything for seniors. This bylaw is based on the fact that the seniors are gonna wanna do everything, it's, it's not mandatory. You're gonna bring people in there, some are gonna react and interact with them or other, we can't base this on the fact that everyone's gonna have a warm and fuzzy when they get there and wanna associate with their neighbors. What we have to look at is who's gonna move there and what it's, what it's gonna cost. Our primary objective should be to make sure people in Littleton can afford this. And I'm telling you, for a garden style apartment, for an apartment like Pondside, for anywhere from 400 to 500,000 dollars to put 15 of them in there is, is too expensive. I don't care what amenities you think you're getting and you're not getting them, there is no set food that's gonna be served, if somebody doesn't wanna cook in their apartment, there's gonna be food available, maybe people are gonna cook together, maybe, maybe people are gonna get together and play board games together and things like that, which is great, I'm not, it's not mandatory and it's not part of this function, it's not, it's, it's all gonna be voluntary, so it's not really all these senior components. Seniors wanna age in place and have services that are available to them. Whether it's professional services, whether it's nursing, whether it's, um, somebody to help them if they need somebody to help, uh, bathing or things like that, that's not in it, this is all voluntary. And it's also, I, I get back to it again, the bulk of these units are over $400,000 for an apartment. A 700 square foot apartment to an 1,100 square, for a two bedroom, 1,100 square foot apartment, that's expensive. And so why do we get He's gonna make a point, Mark, in Cooper Farm, it's like 519 for 1,700 square feet and an oversized garage and almost like what, an eighth of an acre? Right, this is
That's, that's They do not want, they do not want to take care of an eighth of an acre.
No, I, I agree with you Jeff, this, I'm not, I am not saying this plan is bad in and of itself, I'm saying if you're gonna apply to the senior bylaw, then I say it's a bad plan.
Mr. Chair, can we please have, um, can we please make sure to hear public comment before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to any of this, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead Boots, if you wanna make, and then I wanna open it up to the public.
Certainly. So for starters, relative to the bylaw, I would gladly sit down with any one of you because you don't wanna debate it now and go through every step of your bylaw. There's a difference between a bylaw that you folks feel you have and the bylaw that you actually have written. Town council is agreed with the definitions that we have out there, the by, in the bylaw, the bylaw is there. This is, your bylaw does not say we're building Carlton Willard in Bedford where you can start in an independent unit and wind up in a nursing home. That's not what your bylaw proposes, your bylaw proposes five different types of housing and we're using three of those five in our proposal. And none of those, by definition, call to have services to help you bathe, to help you change or those natures, that's, none of them list that. You talk about the spaces and the, and the requirements to the site relative to the space. We meet every exact piece of the bylaw for that. The bylaw says the amount of open space is required, the bylaw says amount of areas, we exceed all of those areas. I will remind you that the engineering review was approved post haste at the very beginning of all these discussions because we met everything, including water quality and runoff to the site. We have every piece of the drainage is going through, um, pre-treatment and everything and we're not having any impact on the water quality to the wetlands. It's all well addressed here throughout the whole piece.
Who approved that?
Green International, we got a, a thing on Green International that, uh, all of our drainage, all of our engineering met all of your requirements.
Did we voted on that?
You didn't vote on it.
Yeah, I voted. No, it's not approved, I mean, come on, let's, 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 let's at least be procedural, we haven't voted on anything for this plan.
I'm, I'm telling you, from the guidelines of your bylaw, we've met the requirements. And if you wanna have a good discussion about each one of them, and you are bringing up the point that people are using things that are out there and not giving examples, so I would like one example where we don't meet what the bylaw says. What is, that's not what you think it should say.
I have no objection to your engineering and I have no objection to your impact on, your wetland impact isn't even my concern. I have no doubt that modern engineering is gonna mitigate any impact that wetland, that, that's not my concern.
Well, it is other, other board members that brought that up.
Who's concerned about the engineers?
Not the issue.
And, alright. Ma, do we have anybody in the audience who wants to speak?
Um, yes, at the moment Christine Nordhaus has her hand up.
Hi, uh, Christine Nordhaus Starhill, I, um, I've been watching this from the beginning, I really do appreciate the changed architecture. Um, it's much, much, much better looking, so thank you for that. Um, I was talking to my friends Warren and Jimmy Terrell, um, who you might know, Warren used to be the town moderator. Um, they live on Mill Road or something like that and, you know, they were saying that they really wished that they could have had an opportunity to buy a place, not for a million bucks and not for 150,000, but in the four to 500,000 dollar range that would allow them to have lower maintenance, uh, for their home. And, you know, to live in a nice little apartment, that wasn't gonna be as much work and instead, because nothing was available in Littleton, they took the money and renovated their own home so that they could stay there, I mean, a lot of Littleton seniors are active and, um, they, they aren't looking for an assisted living situation, they want a lower maintenance cute apartment and if these are truly well-built and not crappy and cheap and the finishes are nice and the buildings are solid, I, I could see them paying 400 to 500,000 dollars for a cute little apartment that was near some trails that they could walk to church and walk to see their friends. Um, so that's my comment.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else, Ma, anyone else?
Linda Stein? Yeah, hi, I'm Linda Stein, I'm from the Historical Commission. Uh, we just had a meeting and, uh, we voted on a statement, uh, tonight to, uh, to submit to the planning board on this project. Um, I'll read it to you. The Littleton Historical Commission has voted that while it is not opposed to the proposed cohousing project in general for 336, 338 King Street, the Hager Homestead, the commission does not support the current architectural plan at this time, but may do so in the future with additional revisions. The commission does support and appreciate the proponent's plan to preserve and maintain the original circa 1800 historical home. However, the Historical Commission agrees with some planning board, uh, members' assessments during preliminary board meetings on the project, that reconsideration of the scale and design of the additional new structures proposed would be beneficial. The scale, the scale of these new structures is substantially larger and not consistent with that of other residential homes in the vicinity or with the character of the original onsite historic home. The Historical Commission agrees with suggestions from some planning board members that the project proponent might consider alternate designs that more closely adhere to the town's new form-based code, such as the big house, small house, back house, barn concept. There are several examples of this and other farmhouse-type designs throughout the town and the planning board has offered to provide the project proponents with specific design examples. An alter, an alternate design that would open up the site somewhat more than in the current proposal, rather than a massive hotel-like apartment building that is currently proposed, would be a better fit for the site and the town. The Historical Commission looks forward to reviewing future submissions for this interesting project and historic site.
Thank you.
Okay, um, John and Victoria Babalvall?
Uh, it's actually just John right now, Victoria's wandered off, I'm curious to know what the, uh, ongoing costs of something like this would be beyond just the initial purchase price. I think that would be an important thing for a senior considering living in a community like this.
Well, if I look at one of their units that they sent us, that 150% for a one bedroom, you'd have taxes of 661 dollars, insurance of 145, PMI of 269 and the HOA fees of 125. So that's, uh, six, seven, eight, 11, 12, 1250 and monthly fees on top of, um, what your mortgage would be.
Boots, Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Yeah.
So those, those are the fees attributed to the affordable housing units, the condo fees are, uh, reduced based upon the sales prices. Um, the market rate fees or the condo fees or your traditional ongoing maintenance fees um, haven't been fully established because we don't have all the systems designed. But I would expect those fees to be in the 300 to 400 dollar a month range. And what those fees cover, the landscaping, the snow removal, it's gonna, um, take care of the elevator, uh, servicing of the elevator and the elevator contracts. Um, and it's also gonna cover the, uh, master insurance policy, uh, which will be included in those fees.
Thank you.
Hey, Patty Hunt? Go ahead Patty.
Hello, anyone there? She's there. She's off mute too, you can talk Mary.
Can hear you.
Hello, anyone there?
Hey?
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
Okay. Hard to hearing, sorry.
Hello.
Uh, Mary Hunt from Edsall Road. Um, on the Council of Aging, the vice chair, and I've been to your meetings. This is my first introduction to this particular project. Printed out some stuff and went over it today. It's a very interesting concept and I totally appreciate it. It'd be wonderful for me, who can afford it? If something happened to my husband. But having worked with the seniors for the last probably too many years, I don't think our seniors in Littleton can afford it. I have said that numerous times at many of the planning board meetings I've gone to. You can go over to Shattuck Street into any one of those apartments that were built in the early 1980s and know we should be rebuilding that apartment complex. Because they are falling apart. Even when that was built, they didn't even build enough parking spaces for people to park their cars. So to build a project like this, which I really like the concept, when we can't even have affordable, nice apartments for the seniors right now, I wouldn't approve this. It's, I think Mark is right. 400,000, if you look at the average income of seniors in this town, they're not gonna afford it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you Mary. Ma, do you have anyone else?
Uh, nobody else with their hand raised?
Okay, well, it's eight o'clock now and it's obviously, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna be able to have a discussion and to vote on this at this time, I'd like to continue this till, when are we, we're meeting, October 1st?
Um, October 1st is the next meeting, I'm concerned because we do have, um, three public hearings already and, um, plus the Cedar Hill Storage Tank scheduled for that date already, um.
Do we want a second meeting or can we, do you think we can fit them in?
Uh, we have the 645, the 5G, 7 o'clock, the Cedar Hills Storage Tank, 715, 22 King Street and, um, 745, uh, the 151, 153 Taylor Street, Amazon Warehouse. So it would be 8:30 or so.
I think we should have a second meeting at some point.
Um, yeah, I think 8:30 is too late to, to have this, um. What's the board, can we meet a second time like on the 10th or the 15th of October?
Yeah, or do you want two weeks from now?
Or you wanna do before that meeting?
That's up to you guys.
Um, I'm good with that, is everyone good in two weeks?
I'm concerned that it's not enough time for the applicant to respond to what's been said at this meeting.
Okay. So let's wait, excuse me, let's wait a month then, let's put them on either 8 o'clock, can we do 8 o'clock Ma on that?
Um, we have public hearings posted already.
Mr. Chairman? Ma, let's, let's, let's make sure we, we have progression for the next meeting, I don't wanna rehash this all over again. If there's no changes, then, then we should be moving to a vote.
Um, Doug has input on the schedule?
Yes, Doug.
Mr. Chairman, um, quite honestly, we're, we're up against Mr. Chairman, um, quite honestly, we're we're up against a timeframe with respect to whether or not we're going to purchase this property. Um, we we will will need to understand where we're going um in in October. Um, while I appreciate the board's consideration, I I'm not so sure we need more than uh two weeks to prepare and respond to what we've heard tonight. Um, and if the board can in fact, uh, you know, fit us in on October first, uh I think we we will certainly be prepared.
Um, Maren, can we? If we get to October first, can we do a week before that? That, what's that? No, that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's two weeks from now, September twenty-four.
Well, that, is that two, um, two weeks? Can we do the twenty-fourth of September?
I I I'm I'm sorry, I'm unavailable. I'm I'm not going to be here. Um, again, the October date was was acceptable.
All right, well, what time can we put them on on October first, Maren?
Um. The the Amazon public hearing starts at seven forty-five. I would suggest eight fifteen, eight thirty.
All right, why don't we do eight fifteen? We'll do a half hour for Amazon. If we have, you know, let's do eight fifteen. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Um, I have a quick question. Hopefully it's quick. Mr. DeShane, you just said that um this could impact the purchase of the property. I thought the property had already been acquired.
No, we're under agreement to purchase the property.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so eight fifteen on the first of October. Is that good, everyone? I think that's the best we can do. Chair?
I would recommend a vote to continue the public hearing.
I'll entertain a motion to continue this till the first of October at uh eight forty, eight fifteen.
I assume.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And if anyone wants to meet with Bruce and his crew and Doug and his uh people, you're more than welcome to meet before the meeting. Um, I'll leave it up to the board members if they want to uh meet with them privately.
I've I've made an offer previously to bring people out on the site. You look at a map that shows wetlands, you gotta go on the site. Those people, your other board members that have been there, have a much different opinion of the property and the what is wet and what is usable when you're actually out on the site. We've also offered to bring people over to New View so you can have a better understanding of um a cohousing operation and the massive use of the uh common facilities on the property. Those offers still exist and I'd be happy to meet with you folks one-on-one or in a group at any of those places.
Bruce, I will meet with you and and go look at both. I unfortunately was busy, but.
I understand.
I'll go.
I understand.
If anyone else wants to go, let's set up a time.
I'd like to go to New View.
Okay. Okay.
We'll set it up.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you, members of the board, for your time.
Thank you. All right, we have an eight o'clock, continue public hearing, G Seven Labs, one sixty air road.
Yeah. Uh, Mark, I'm going to recuse myself. Good evening, everybody. Have a nice evening. Bye-bye.
Oh, are you done for the night, Lisa?
Yes, I'm I'm done for the night.
Oh, well, you could come back at eight forty-five, but that's all right.
Yeah, um.
You don't have to.
No, I know. I've discussed it with Maren. Okay, good night.
All right, thank you. Good night. Okay, so we have a eight o'clock, continue public hearing, G Seven Labs, adult marijuana establishment, the marijuana testing laboratory special permit.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, same representatives as August sixth, Shan Karragadum, owner of G Seven Lab, Bruce with uh GPR, Jim Valeriani speaking with Mensing Group. We felt our hearing on August sixth uh went very well and was very thorough and there was a lot of vetting that took place. There were a half a dozen or so items that we were asked to address or supplement our application with. We have since done that. Uh, Shan Karr was politely persistent and burning the midnight oil to get everything in very quickly. Uh, he was able to get police, fire, and the building inspector by there to inspect the existing layout. They've got no concerns. They see no code issues. You know, we're just building out a a non-load-bearing wall to separate the lab from a reception area. They have no issues. They provided written confirmation of that. Um, the number of employees will be a total of five, three onsite, two as couriers. Um, the parking area has since become uh common. It had been divided up between the six units so that each unit had approximately eight spaces. Now it's available for all units. Uh, come as you may, go as you may. Uh, let's see. Parking area modified and mastered for use, let's see. One of the things that did occur that is important to the operation of this facility, there are only three or four facilities, testing labs that are up and running in the state. There are more that are needed, given the retail and cultivation facilities that are expanding. And what Shan Karr was able to find out in research over the past month is those other testing labs are operating on the hours that are more expansive than what we had originally applied for. So just this past week, Shan Karr went in front of the Board of Selectmen. They were gracious enough to modify the host community agreement to allow a change in the hours, and we would like to seek this board's approval for that change. Now Shan Karr had indicated that we would be running twenty-four-seven with the equipment. I think originally we were looking at six to eight for uh employee staffing. Uh, just giving how busy this is anticipated to be and uh the need to keep pace with the testing, we're looking to be able to operate twenty-four-seven with employees. I don't think it's likely that we're gonna have uh that he'll have employees in there at two in the morning, but people get up early, they want to get in early, catch up on work. And for sample deliveries, uh the Board of Selectmen has modified the host agreement uh for hours between, I believe, six AM and eight PM. Uh, this will have little or no impact to the trip counts that GPR put together. Uh, it's it's necessary for competition. It's necessary to keep up with the with the load of testing that will be required. Yeah, yes.
That's a question. In general, like to anybody who knows the answer, why do we care what your hours of operations are?
I don't know.
It's a test. But I mean, wouldn't it be preferable to have all your deliveries happen at off-hours? I mean, that road's a nightmare during peak traffic. Like, if you guys want to operate at three AM, I couldn't care less.
Well, I I I think the samples, I I doubt there's be a lot of sample deliveries at night. I'll tell you, I certainly would want Bruce and Shan Karr to weigh in if I'm off-track with any information or facts or uh input that they'd like to lend. So um I we 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 could, we could certainly talk more about the hours, but that is, that's what, I tell you, that's what the Selectmen approved, and I think we should just.
I'm just saying, is there any reason why, is there any like like consideration that's unknown to anybody here, why why we would be concerned about your hours of operations?
I I think we're concerned about people dropping it off. I think eight o'clock is fine. If they want to work all night long, I agree with Jerry. We don't care if they're in a locked building, um testing the stuff, but maybe normal business.
Well, so if if I may, during the select board meeting, um I I was watching it and when uh Shan Karr presented, it sounded like what he was saying was that operating hours would be from six to eight PM when there would be somebody there and that the hours, as an example, if something were to happen during the time that the lab was in in operation, say at two o'clock in the morning, he said, I want to make sure I can go to the lab at two o'clock in the morning and make sure everything's okay.
Okay.
So so that's what I heard him say. And my question is, and I have a question, and that is, if the operation is going without any staff there, is that safe? Again, I don't know, so that's why I'm asking, is it safe? And what could be the worst thing that happens if it's unattended during the?
Um, if I may to the board, um, thank you for the question. I would like to make clear um the issue I raised with Board of Selectmen for the change in hours, and um I want to expand a little bit on that. So there are two um currently licensed labs within the state and four others with, including me, that have provisional license who have um permission to operate twenty-four hours with staff um with limited business hours for accepting specimens. So to answer Anna's question, um what would happen if um we leave it unattended operational is we want most labs in the states right now, even hospital labs, um while they are staffed, but I want to be able to run my specimens overnight. I want to be able to run uh my samples overnight. The equipment can be programmed automatically to run it. It's just gonna um follow the program, but um ninety-five out of hundred percent, those programs run nicely. It's the it's the time when they don't run nicely. There is no adverse effect. It's just gonna stop running. Adverse effect is to the business owner, to me, when I come in next morning, I would have come in two, three hours earlier or if I awake at that time, maybe even at the same time, to correct that error on the automation to continue testing. But if I don't know about that until the morning or if I can't get in the building until the morning, all that time is wasted. So if that kind of answers your question.
Yeah, okay.
The freezers, negative twenty, negative eighty-degree freezers have PCR testing probes, um reagents that are worth um thousands of dollars. And if those freezers were to fail overnight, there's the alarm system that gets triggered. I get email calls. I want to be there in time before those reagents probes get damaged. I've spent numerous nights in my professional career fixing automation and robotics till three AM, four AM in the laboratory so that we can fix the instrument and keep it running. I do not want um the hours of operation to restrict me in those in those situations where I have to stay up till two, three, or four AM to fix instrumentation and and keep it, my lab going. And I just requested this to Board of Selectmen to give me a plain-level field at all other labs to have unrestricted twenty-four-seven operational and staffing hours. And um the board agreed to my request, and I thank you. And and they also, I requested the board to write the letter to Planning Board, which the Board, Select Board Chair um agreed and and signed the letter and and sent it to the Planning Board, if that answers all your questions.
Yeah. Well, one more question related to this topic. So um given that you've just received your provisional license and this change in time is after that, so how will that work with the CCC? Are you notifying them or how will that work?
Yes. Um, CCC has to be modified within five days, but the change of hours has been approved by Board of Select Chair. Selectmen, we have to um amend it in written form too, which will happen consequently. And once that happens, I will notify CCC within five days of happening that.
Thank you.
I agree with Jerry. We don't, if they want to be in a locked building and they're working on their equipment and they they're doing testing, I think we're okay. I think the concern is when people drop stuff off. So six to eight o'clock PM should be the 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 end for the public and then what they do privately inside a locked building, I think we're okay with.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and um not trying to move things along too quickly, but I think again, we had a thorough presentation last uh month. Uh, Maren was kind enough to share some drafts uh of a decision. I worked on them. She has reviewed them and revised and put in some standard condition language. I think the draft is in very good shape, and I appreciate her efforts on that. Um, the site plan, uh I think there were some minor updates to that, and uh I believe Bruce uh may want to speak to the necessity of a of a monitoring well. I know it's a common occurrence in the Aquifer Water Resource Protection District, but you know, we we're not seeing the need for that. Uh, we're hoping it can go away, but Bruce may have some technical information that he can share to to assist uh and 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 indicating why we would like to have that waived. Bruce, uh, can you help?
Good evening, Bruce Ringwall. Um, the site plan was updated to address some of the comments from both the Fire Department and Police Department and the meetings that Shan Karr had, as well as um Littleton Apothecary had with those um agencies and entities. What we did was we added in all the lighting that exists around the building. There's floodlighting around the the exterior. There's downlighting at all the entries. There's uh multiple parking lot lights in the front as well as street lighting on um air road that is aimed at the the building itself. Um, we added in some signs that request that the back of the building is not for um use other than employees and deliveries. And uh that basically sums up the the major changes to the site plan um since you saw it last. The issue of a monitoring well, I had spoken with Cory at Littleton Light and Water back some time ago, um and he didn't feel it based upon the quantities and what we have while is necessary at this time. Um, when uh Jim and the group brought their proposals to Maren, Maren added in the standard language uh that we have in an Aquifer special permit, uh Aquifer and Water Resource Special Permit applications that if wells are necessary, they're at the cost of the applicant and at the direction and location of the Light and Water Department. Um, so I I don't believe that there's a call for it here, um but that's not my call. We just put it into the decision so that when and if Littleton Light and Water has an issue, as we know they have had, um relative to uh some of the areas towards the air property line, um, you know, then you get the the call to put a well in, so.
Okay, so just to reiterate, um, as Bruce said, that's normal language that we put in our decision for that area, and we'll leave it basically up to Light Water Department if they want testing or not.
Mr. Chair, if there isn't any more new information, we can go ahead and get started on the draft.
Absolutely. Does anyone else have anything else they want to add? Just not. So do we have a draft decision, Maren? Do we have a draft decision?
Um, yes, it was posted to the website about a week ago now. Um, let's see. Goes through the um background of, you know, the applications that were submitted and then turns to uh the determinations and findings, um mimics the uh bylaws uh that need to be met and notes that each of the findings that needs to be made that the planning board has is willing to make those findings and then goes on to conditions. Um, would you like to review the conditions?
I'd actually like to review all of it. I have comments throughout.
Um, have we sent it to Town Council yet or?
We have sent it to Town Council. What I would recommend is um that we do to find final wording as to Town Council.
Yep.
Well, Mr. Chair, if you haven't reviewed it, what what does that do for us though?
Well, have you reviewed it? What do you, do you want to give us your concerns or do you want to?
I have reviewed it, so it. You're the chair, so what would you like to do?
You know what, Anna, if you want to discuss your concerns right now, why don't we briefly go over them and then we'll send it off to Town Council? How's that?
Okay. Um. Jerry, Jeff, any comments? I don't want to.
I, I did review it and I I note that we'll have to change the hours of operation. I noted one typo, uh which I won't even mention. Um, and I found this to be pretty comprehensive, but uh there are uh very elaborate conditions relative to the Aquifer Waters Resource District Special Permit. Um, I think that this, since this is in an existing building and an existing site, um, I think it's, our task is lessened.
Yeah, I I I agree with you, Jeff. I I it's an already established uh site. It's in an industrial zone. It's exactly where we wanted these businesses to be when we contemplated the um bylaw for marijuana use. Um, so I, this is, this is just a great place for it, and I I actually have no concerns at all.
And I I think mine are are more just making sure that we've um crossed all the Ts, dotted the Is kind of stuff, so let's start on page two. Um, the the comment that talks about um applicant has rights to entirety of parking area given recent condominium master plan revisions opening entire lot to all six units. So that's great. My point is, um and has been, that when you look at even the updated document that was um that was provided to to everybody on the site plan that says parking plan, there is a table there. Site plan that says parking plan, there is a table there that specifically talks about. Um parking spaces provided and the word there being provided, it's actually in the bylaw. Um, on the um. Special permit application, page four top, it says number of parking spaces required and provided. So even if that can say all. Just so that that is completed, that would be great if that can be done.
So you're you're asking for uh, forgive me, a limitation on uh any type of limitation on the parking?
No, no, if 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 the parties involved have said all, I'm just saying it should be on public record. That there are no limitations.
Oh, yeah, they were, they revised the master deed and the trust of the condominium and that's that's going to go to record at the Middlesex Registry.
Right.
It's got a record and it's part of the application.
Right, but you guys still aren't hearing me. In that document, if somebody goes back. In time, five years from now, and looks that up and they say, oh, there aren't any parking spaces provided. So that's why I believe it's important to have a number in there or the word all parking spaces.
But on the on the site plan, it's uh it calls out and it says the parking space is provided. There's sixty-six spaces and that's. More than the fifty-one that the building breaks down for, so.
Okay, all I'm saying is that I'm doing this to try to protect the applicant so that there isn't any issue with the fact that. There are no parking spaces provided. That's it.
Are you talking about the checklist, Anna, or the actual?
That's what I'm talking about. Talking about the checklist.
Talking about the checklist.
Okay, so.
By the way, just so you guys don't play, we're nitpicking you. Not having completed checklist for applications, in in our opinion, is becoming a problem. For us, because it's not easy for us to go back historically and reference things when. Applications come in, they're they're essentially administratively incomplete. We just like you guys to complete the checklist.
So we we complete, when we submit a checklist, we complete it to the best of our ability in discussions with Marin and and what is there and isn't there. There are also places that are very clear in that checklist that are for the board to mark off as they review the project. So um, one of two ways we can resolve this. Uh, we can just write it in. Uh, Marin can write it in and the application that's there as a record application that stays in the file, or you can make it a condition and we'll gladly. Write it in and I'll submit it tomorrow.
Sure, that sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. So the the next one, um going down under the special permit um information. Item three A, it says design of interior floor plan approved by building department. I noticed on the um CCC provisional letter that they are requesting architectural plans, so. If you could please, Bruce, tell me what the architectural plans that have been submitted to us for review, just to make sure we're on the same page.
My knowledge, there have been no architectural plans submitted to you for review. Um, it's my understanding that uh the police and fire department would be uh witness of the. Interior architectural plans as well as the building commissioner. And uh the CCC gets that, but it's not a document that any of those entities want to have open to the public. Um for obvious reasons.
Yeah, we'll we'll be filing a final architectural plan with the CCC. It'll be stamped by the whatever, a structural engineer or an architect. Uh filed with the building permit. Uh, we're not at that stage yet, but that obviously follow that subsequent to the land use approvals.
Okay. Just just got the checklist as to to such a fact.
Yeah, the whole thing of it is, is that the emergency accesses are well labeled and that they're and they're there. Uh, and that's it. I mean, in 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 this particular unit, there is a door that's going into an existing doorway. And that's about it.
Yeah, right.
Gary, what were, what did you just say, Jerry?
I'm saying, so you're act, your verbal explanation, just put it in the checklist.
Put what in the checklist?
What you just said.
That we're not, that the we submitted to the town, to the the fire.
In lieu of, in lieu of actually giving you an architectural plan, this is the situation and we're and we're good.
Whoa, 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 stop one second. The zoning bylaw calls for exterior architectural plans. They don't call for interior plans.
I agree.
For elevations. This is an existing building, so to help meet that requirement, I submitted photographs. Of each elevation and labeled them as such for the application. There is no requirement for an interior site plan in the zoning bylaw.
Bruce, then we're good. You're good.
Thank you.
That's it. That's all I'm saying.
Anna, any, what else?
Okay, so um. Under item number six in that same area, we'll obviously want to make sure that whatever letter the select board. Updates for the host community agreement. Um. Whether it's a letter or the actual agreement itself, that that's get, that that gets put in here.
Yes.
Okay. Um, item number seven on page three. I know we have the letter from the police department. Do you have a letter from the fire department as well? Because I I don't know if if the fire chief.
That was my error. Um, 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 uh, board member Houston, that was my error. That was a joint letter from both police and fire. I just labeled it as police. That was my error. That's a joint letter from police and fire approving.
Yeah, when I met with um both the police and fire chief, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going to go through them. Um, fire chief, it was a joint meeting at the police's station conference room and um. The police chief said, um, you will get your um letter and then we'll mention that we meant jointly. And reviewed the plan. So it was a joint meeting and was a joint letter.
Yep, if you could please fix that and add fire on there as well.
That was my mistake.
Um, on that same page, under number ten. It seems like there might be an item that that needs to be on a separate line, so it's the very last sentence. It doesn't seem to go with the rest of the set, with the rest of that item number ten. It seems like it should be its own number. Which says the site will have approximately five employees with adequate parking available for its operations.
Okay, we can make that fifteen.
Yep.
Thank you.
Under conditions, item number two, obviously will be the change of hours. Um. So I had a question, then moving into conditions under number four and five. The wording is just different and I didn't know from from what we have in our bylaw and I was just wondering who drafted and why the variation in the language.
Well, I worked uh, I think the only uh. Water type facility was an RMD MTSD permitted a few years ago. I I worked with that as a starting point. And converted it to the best of my ability for the testing lab. Um, so if uh the language, uh I'm not aware of any other adult use uh facilities that have been permitted in town.
So. I thought it was actually trying to mimic what was already in our own bylaw. Um.
So you're you're referring to part four?
Uh, number four and number five, yes.
We can update it to make sure that it um references it, it mimics um the correct bylaw.
So we just make sure it mimics the bylaw. Okay, we can do that. I'll work with Marin on that.
Yep, thank you. Um, under number ten. Uh, I had a question. It says special permit shall lapse. Upon expiration or termination of the applicant's final license to be issued by the CCC. Period. That's what's in our bylaw. And then it says, following issuance of the special permit and final architectural construction drawing, so. I didn't know if that was. Something you were adding in. As extra in addition to what we have in the bylaw.
Yeah, I I think it's a bit cumbersome. I don't think it's necessary. Uh, if if our final license with the CCC uh lapses or is terminated, that's the end of it, so. I think that's extraneous language.
Okay, all right. Um, so in our bylaw, one seventy-three dash two oh one B. There were, it actually lists everything that should be conditioned and items number two, three, six and seven aren't in here and should be.
This is under.
One seventy-three, two oh one B, as in boy. So you got most of them, but items, or you got several of them, but items two, three, six and seven aren't in here. Things like compliance with the host community agreement.
Okay.
And then the next section as well, one seventy-three, two oh one C. Item number three isn't in here and should be as well, because that's in our bylaw and the bylaw asks that those be conditioned. Um.
That, I mean, and that's fine. We'll 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 certainly add them. Um, I guess perhaps I felt it's in the bylaw. Those are conditions that are required regardless of whether they're in a decision or not. So perhaps that was my thinking at the time, but I I will certainly add those and get them right over to Marin.
It it's always, it, yeah, I always like to have them in there as well. Um, one question that I had, because we had talked about this the last time, was given the fact that we aren't seeing the internal architectural. Plans was that we conditioned that there'd be a door between the reception and the lab.
That's happened. There was an original plan submitted. It may have been considered basic, but.
Yep. Well, and it did not show the the door there, so that's why I I request.
That will uh, that will happen. We will make sure and uh. Whether it's added to this decision or we just certainly, it's it's going to be requirement. It's going to be on the building plans that that gets stamped by the engineer of the building department.
Yeah, I I would suggest if we add it to, add it um to the decision, then that's another good place to have it.
Yeah. And then I had a question about another condition, and that is um Ed's comment in his letter says um that construction drawings submitted for building permits must be. Must include a construction control affidavit, provided a design professional and a stamp, blah, blah, blah. So is that something that we should condition as well?
No, that's part of the building code.
Okay, yeah, we not recommend we we start.
That's that's required by building code.
Yes, we're good. And then. Final question that I had related to parking, um. I'm thinking about it from the site plan review pieces is, um, did you all take a look at the letter that was written um on behalf of the disability commission? And did you consider any of their recommendations?
I didn't see it. I know we've got the handicap spaces that are required. I I didn't, I wasn't aware of it.
Were we the only ones who received it, Marin?
No.
Okay.
I've not seen it, but um we have the handicap spaces right in front of the 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 main access doors for. For this property as well as for the retail property down the end of the building.
Right, um what what the site plan shows is um more accessibility than um the. Disability Commission Vice Chair suggested could be done.
Good. Good deal.
So from that standpoint, then um. There won't be any changes.
So I would, personally, I would recommend having um multiple ramps rather than one in the middle of the parking lot.
We have two.
Exactly.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that had been noted as something that had been reviewed by the applicant.
Are you, are you all set, Anna?
Those are my comments, yes.
Thank you. So why don't we dress those, get them squared away, get the the news?
Um, I would rec, suggest that all those could be done if you vote contingent on final wording um by town council.
Please.
Did you hear anything substantive? A lot of important details, but.
I can certainly manage that with Marin and town council can make final review. There, everything is is crystal clear to me what I have to add in there and I think it's all minor and. We've discussed it and we 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 really. Were hoping very kindly and respectfully for a vote tonight, Mister Chairman.
Now, let's proceed. Come on.
I'd like to vote too.
Okay, is everyone ready to vote on this? Anna, are you okay?
Yeah, I'll I'll go ahead and forward my notes to to Marin.
Okay.
Um, so that they have that.
That would be helpful.
Great, then I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Do we have any public comment, Mister Chair?
Is there anybody out there?
Nobody with a hand raised for public comment.
Then I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
A second.
Okay. Um, Jerry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Let's let's state what we're voting on.
We're closing the hearing first.
Oh, close it. Oh. We're closing the hearing.
Yeah, definitely, yes.
Okay, Anna?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Okay, now I'll.
We have a question.
What?
We have, we we have a question from from.
So this is a consolidated decision, two special permits, site plan review. The site plan review, I believe, is just signed by the board uh. Approved uh the 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 two special permits. We need unanimous votes. Uh, we're we're certainly hoping and I I trust that they're there. Uh, but I do believe with the uh. With the special permit and the, although they're all consolidated and we have. One layout of your vote, a or nay, uh I think. The adult use special permit should be voted separately from the water resource. Just for formality purposes, uh but I leave that to you. I, perhaps I'm just being too thorough.
So you're suggesting that we have two, two separate votes?
I, I'll, I'll take uh.
One for site plan review and one for resource, Aquifer Resource.
And and the adult use. I mean, if you want to vote all three at once and you're, I think that's fine too. I just. You're, there are three, the three permits.
Well, well, why don't we vote on the site plan and the special permit separately? Okay, will that make it easier for you? Okay. Let's start with the site plan. That's the easier of the two. I'll, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the site plan as?
Do you have a decision for this or no?
Yes, the site plan decision is wrapped in with the uh two special permits decision.
Don't we have a clerk who's supposed to read all that, Mark?
It's seven pages. You want to read it?
No.
The room jerk.
No, I don't want to read.
Now, let's. Subject to the um conditions of approval and town council.
And final wording by town council.
All the wordage. Verbiage. For site plan.
Including our comments from tonight, yes.
Including the comments from tonight. Okay, that's what we're voting on. Anyone want to make a motion to approve that?
I'm, I'm so moved. Go ahead.
Okay, second. All those uh, all those in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, now for the special permit.
I think the request was first for the Aquifer District Special Permit.
Oh, yeah.
Aquifer Water Resource District Special Permit.
With the conditions and we'll let the water department decide that they want monitoring as well. Um, anyone want to make a motion to to uh approve that as amended?
I so moved.
Second? Jerry, second, all right. So all those in favor? Jerry?
Hi.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, now can we move to the special permit?
That leaves the adult use um marijuana testing laboratory special permit.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Anyone want to, I'll second that. Okay, I'll ask for a vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes.
Forget no one's asking. And I'm a yes, so there's, you just, you just hit the trifecta.
Three.
Thank you very much for your time.
Very much uh for all your cooperative efforts and for helping us uh uh put together a very excellent project.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right, we have a seven thirty. Informal discussion about the retail marijuana application. Um, Christina, are you there?
Yep. Oh, yeah, I've been here.
Okay, so do you want to give us a brief? Since you're not actually approved or anything else and you wanted to give us, give us the Reader's Digest version, how's that?
Um, okay, Jim, do you want to start or what?
Yeah, I will, I will. Thank you, Christine. It's an excellent application. I've asked Lake Mensing to hire her, but she's uh in. Got a physics degree and not a law degree. Uh, an excellent application and it's ready to be filed, but where held up, I just thought I'd give a little bit of. Uh, background on this. Uh, she got her notice of completion, Littleton Apothecary on uh August thirteenth on or about. That triggers a ninety day statutory review period. That's the max and that's the minimum. During that ninety day period, um sixty days are set aside for the municipality. After being contacted by the CCC to indicate are they in compliance with their local permits. Now, unfortunately. And we've seen this.
and we've seen this with other towns, the town of Littleton has a provision in its bylaw that is counter to the intent and purposes of the CCC 94G and the regulations, which, um, I mean, they're asking, are they even in compliance with their permits? And they can't possibly be because your bylaw specifically states we can't file till we get our provisional. So that, that really just creates a delay. We've worked with the CCC before on this and they just don't want to get into local uh, battles on this. Um, lines with, was there an opinion by, uh, town council as to whether we might be able to apply, uh, Maren? Did that come along as to whether that might be something that?
Yeah, we can't. We, my understanding is that.
I, I just need to say this. You mean, you have a chicken and egg problem with the bylaw?
Absolutely.
It's super illegal.
Well, I, the CCC.
Let's leave that one aside. You've got a chicken and egg problem.
We've got a chicken and egg problem, but it causes a delay is what it calls.
No, understood. What, what does, uh, what does our town council say about that, Mark or Maren?
Well, the that, I don't think that's, that's the question that you need to answer. The question that you have already answered is that you will accept an application once it, um, includes the provisional license. Um, the bylaw does say, um, that there has to be a final decision by the CCC. You're not requiring that. You're asking for a provisional license to be part of the application. I understood, uh, the discussion from the last meeting.
No, what I'm saying is.
The board's preference on it.
No, I'm just, I guess procedurally, if we go down the happy path, let's say we go down the happy path, we approve and we're talking about, we're approving a chicken and we don't have an egg. What, what does that do to our process? Are we, like, do we run afoul of anything? Like, do we, do we even care?
No, we don't even really care. Um, we've found that process, um, worked, uh, back when we did the, uh, RMD, the sanctuary, the first time through.
I, I really want to interrupt. I, I only have a few minutes.
Wait, I'm not done yet. So just so you know, so Maren, so that means that essentially we could approve in this situation and there's no risk to the board?
No.
But it's not an issue. I guess what I'm saying, Jim, it's not really an issue, is it?
So the que- the question really is, Jerry, do we want to go to a full-blown application process with an applicant who has not been approved by the state yet? If we don't, if we want to do that and the board decides they want to go forward with it, it's up to us, really.
I know. What I'm saying is, given the fact that they can't comply with our bylaw, you should move forward.
So I have a question. Why wasn't this an issue with G7 then? I mean, I don't remember getting.
Can I say something?
I have a question and I just want someone to answer that question.
Right, if, if you recall, we did wait until we had the, um, provisional license before you voted.
Before you voted, but not opened the hearing. But I really don't want to talk about this. If, if you guys don't want me to apply, like, I think it's wrong, but you've already made your decision. I just want to talk about my.
We made a decision.
And, and I'm, I'm totally confused about this chicken and egg thing. So does that mean that if you, do you automatically then get your provisional license at the end of 90 days? Is that the issue?
I, unless there is, unless there is something in my background check, which there isn't.
So the issue is whether or not we can just start a hearing.
Basically, I talked to the Cannabis Control Commission, uh, last week. They, you know, my background, uh, check is complete. Um, the suitability, my suitability review is complete. The missing ingredient is the letter from the town that Joe hung on to for a few weeks. Um, the 90-day thing is the 90-day thing. I mean, like, my, I will get a provisional license and it's fine. I don't really want, that's not really what I wanted to talk about tonight. Um, I put in my application, then the documents that I sent you, that I'm real, I would really like to, I would definitely like to start the 65-day clock at some point to hold the hearing.
Well, that was, that, Christina, if I may, that was a, perhaps, I don't want to use the word compromise, but you've got 65 days to open the hearing upon filing.
Right, but I don't want to, I really want to speak to my, at my documents here and my, my materials. And I really want to talk about what I've put together and if there are any glaring concerns that the planning board has.
Okay. Okay, perhaps I can revisit it.
And I have a very important question to ask, too.
Wait, I have an important question. These documents that you're referring to, are they documents that we've seen and reviewed?
I sent them a couple of weeks ago and electronic form and paper form. I sent them to Maren Matthew, my husband. Happy anniversary, honey. It's our 20th wedding anniversary today. Um, so the, um, he brought them over to Maren, um, and I sent, I've been adding to them and I think that seriously, this is the most rock solid special permit application ever in the history of applications. I sent updated ones to Maren a couple of days ago. So I can understand if you don't have the ones that I sent a couple of days ago, but you should have the ones that I sent on the 20-somethings of August.
No, this is, is a pre-application informal discussion. But I wanted the planning board to review the application materials. That happens when the application is filed.
I thought that the informal discussion was that I send what I have and you guys take a look and tell me.
Provide consulting work.
Uh, you should, you wouldn't have to. When you look at my documents, Jerry, you'll see that it's not.
We're not going to, we're not going to pre-preface your documents before you.
My understanding of this conversation is that I would send everything I had to Maren for you to look at. We would discuss those documents and then you would decide whether or not, I, I mean, I, I'm sorry if I misunderstood your process. So that's, that, I'm not looking for consulting work. I'm looking to see if you had.
Let's take a step back. You have to have the documents. We have to decide whether we want to accept them and open, in order for us to, to look at.
You don't have a complete application yet.
I know, I know.
Right. And, and there's, there's no decision at this point for the planning board to make. This is just an informal discussion. Um, the, the application is forthcoming. Um, perhaps, um.
Can I ask a question about?
Does Mar Haskins share the schedule, um, that she's looking at and?
I have a question about the zone, uh, the aquifer zone, the, the Form 1A. Um, the aquifer resource thing. So when I go through that checklist, it's nothing about this checklist applies in any way to a, to a retail shop. Like, there's no big parking lot or extra flow or no chemicals. I mean, it's just a retail shop. And if anything cannabisy got destroyed or broke, you know, if I broke something, like, it has to be, it has to be cleaned up in a, on camera by two people and documented and signed off on with like a special report for the Cannabis Control Commission. So it's not like you just sweep it into the sewer system, you know, like. So there's nothing at all unusual about my shop with regard to uh, flows or anything for this aquifer thing. So do I have to apply for this special permit too?
Mike.
Um, I'll share with you the answer. I'll share with you the answer that I gave Bruce on the same question. Um, when asked, I always recommend, um, that, uh, businesses within the Aquifer Water Resource District apply. Um, so that down the road, there's never any question. It wouldn't be, there would be no appeal, um, no question that, um, you meet the bylaw. I didn't say that very well, um, but it's, it, it's my recommendation. Um, and whether you choose to apply is, is up to you and your team.
If, if I may, I have a suggestion. Um, part of the condition, part of the issue here with this and the last one, the last application is, is that there's a lot of of money and time and effort that's going into the process. Um, when I read through the, uh, aquifer special permit and all the various different guidelines, there are no triggers, um, for this use within this existing building on an existing site with existing drainage, existing impervious areas, et cetera, et cetera, to trigger it. So in, to help with the suggestion that Maren has is that I would recommend that we fill out the application and submit the application with the statement that it is the applicant's opinion and their consultants that there is no need for this special permit and therefore not file a FIF with it and give you that application that can go on the file. Does that sound like a possibility that now we have the box checked off that we talked about the aquifer, but we're not filing for anything because we don't hit any of the thresholds? Can I, can I, can I counter your question, just so we don't spend too much time on this administratively? I, I highly recommend that you guys put your full application together in the manner that you so see fit. That we then take the application itself, run it through town council, get, get their 50,000-foot opinion on it and then proceed from there. That way you guys are wasting any time trying to schedule hearings with us and then having us come back during, once the hearing is open, having to adjudicate these things. I'd rather just have it solved upfront. And then we can just get down to the brass tacks. That should save you time. Spend more time upfront to save yourself time because you're, if you're really fighting a calendar clock, it's not man-hours that you're fighting. It's calendar days, right? Because every month you delay with us, it's just another month, another month, another month.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend, I mean, Mark, and anybody else on the board can think differently, but that would be my recommendation, since we haven't really.
Jerry, the, the crux of this whole thing is do you want her to put her application all together and file it with us? With the, of the, with the acceptance that she's not approved by the Cannabis Control Commission? Do you want to?
That's what I'm saying. So that, so you get the application and we run it by town council. If he doesn't, if he doesn't come back and say, whoa, guys, big red flag, don't do that, then we should proceed. If there's no stops, then we move. If there's a stop, then they have their answer and it's, it's not ambiguous, right?
Well, Christine, if that's the way you want to go?
Yeah, yeah. It is. I mean, I, I, I think, you know, I mean, I, I even have the green cards for the mailing all labeled. I am ready to rock and roll with this. I want to submit it as soon as I can. So I mean, if I, I want this, there's a ton of information for you all to review as soon as you can have it. I want that to happen and I'm, you know, so I'll get it to you tomorrow.
And, and, and there's stuff we're going to need to talk about. So I'd rather get down to the point where we're really talking about your application and we can get to the merits of your application, not and get, you know, get over the administrative hump. I, I'm just concerned if, if there really is a chicken and egg problem, our bylaw is not written well, then that's an opportunity for town council to say, I see the problem. Maybe we treat this application a certain way, but then we, we move right away to change the bylaw to remove the chicken and egg problem. But we're not going to get there unless you guys file.
So I have a question that I, I really would like an answer to, and that is this chicken and egg problem, why didn't we have this with G7?
Because they got to approve them.
Because you let them open the hearing before they had their provisional license.
No, I would, I wouldn't agree with either of those statements. Um, it doesn't, not based on approval and not based on, um, the board deciding when they would open the public hearing.
Also, it's.
Hold on, Mark.
It's a.
Standard too, that G7 was a lab. It's not going to be open to the public. And as we all know, there's going to be more input because it's an, it's a retail establishment.
Right, but.
So you're saying that, so we're saying that G7 did not receive a letter titled municipal notification of a marijuana establishment?
They did, but it wasn't delayed for three weeks. It was immediately sent to the select board.
Okay. And, and so let me just finish. I want to make sure I understand this. So, so, so the select board authorized Joe Layden to sign this and send this off, right?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Instead of a month ago.
Okay. And so because of that, then this essentially states that you are in compliance with municipal bylaws or ordinances. And I have a question. What does that, what does that even mean?
It means zoning. So part of my application to the Cannabis Control Commission is a, a plan to remain compliant with local zoning, where I talk about in that part of my application, which was approved, that part was approved, I talk about the, the clock for the special permit, um, I, the, the, the zoning compliance and uh, building code compliance and fire code compliance and my plan to adhere to the local zoning um, bylaws and ordinances. So the Cannabis Control Commission doesn't care about necessarily the specifics of our bylaws. They just want to know that I have a plan to remain compliant with my bylaws and that everybody involved enforcing those is also yeah, yeah, you know what I mean?
Here, my point is, our bylaw is written agnostic as to whether or not you're building a new facility from scratch or whether you're buying an existing building that comes out of the box. In this case, if you've got something that's mostly out of the box, right? So a lot of our bylaw, while it may or may not be applicable, it's, it's not really a burden for you to prove because you're not starting from scratch. And that's what I'm saying. In this circumstance, it'd be better, let's just get opinion from, um, town council in this case to figure out, A, how, how we can proceed with your application and then B, for the board and for the town itself, what modifications we may need to make to the bylaw, Anna, to your point, to address those concerns so that procedurally you feel more comfortable. I mean, if you, if you're confused and that, then that means the bylaw in and of itself.
Well, I'm confused by the letter.
For, for, uh, approving applications, which is really the purpose of this board. I'm just saying, we just may need to clean it up a little bit. It's a good test case and we should just, I just think we should proceed, but not be afraid to proceed.
Right.
I'm the queen of the test case.
We don't want to leave it to the town council. It was certainly like town council's opinion. Uh, I, I just want to note, uh, I mean, at the rate we're going with that 90-day statutory review period, uh, uh, so, uh, notice of, uh, uh, completion came out in August 13th. That puts it August. That means November 13th, the 90-day, uh, period expires. By then, the November CCC meeting will, will have occurred. I believe they meet on the first Thursday of every month.
Same day as the planning board.
Do you want to get in here in October?
Uh, or early November.
She may not get a provisional till December, so you've got 65 days to open a hearing. Perhaps we could file in November. Uh, and.
You've got tons of time to put this together.
It's together.
Already together.
It's together.
File it.
We're, we're getting late and we're going around in circles. Why don't?
That's what I'm saying. File it.
Okay. Put everything together and we'll see what happens with it, okay?
You're going to love this application.
Does the board have any other questions or concerns?
No.
Oh, okay.
So I, yeah, I do. So what we're saying is that when you say file it, what does that mean? File it with us?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I still have the same concerns that I did the last time, and that is that we are setting precedent that anybody else that comes before us is going to be able to file early.
No, we're not. No, 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 we're not, Anna. That's what I'm saying. All, all we're saying is file the application. We'll take a look at it. We'll look at it with, with, with town council. If town council comes back and says, you shouldn't take this application, it has a stop, then that's how we'll proceed. If he comes back and, and gives us an out, then we can proceed, then we'll proceed. That's what I'm saying. You're not going to get a, a clean answer until we, until we actually get an application.
And there's no, you know, like, uh, submitting the application is, is one thing, uh, you know, opening the hearing is another. Uh, i- i- and, and granting the special permit is still another.
We're not even, we're not even talking about approval. We're talking about a precedent.
That's, that's Christine's. Submit the application, but it's not going to be intended for notice of publication. It's intended for the, the town council review.
All right.
Fine. I'm good with that. Are you good? Is everyone else good with that?
Yes.
I think that's fair. I appreciate that. Okay. Okay. Uh, she's got a fantastic application.
All right.
Great.
Okay, let's finish up because Jerry's on the timeline.
It's nine o'clock.
Thanks, Jerry, especially. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Happy anniversary. Okay, we're going to, we've got an 8:45 and we've got to talk about road exception, acceptance of town of Littleton. Quickly before we lose Jerry.
Come on.
All right. Maren, can you give us an update of where we're at with these?
Yep, absolutely. Um, but still in progress with each and every one of them. I've seen, um, great, uh, progress from the developers on getting a lot of the roadway work done. A lot of. A lot of payments gone down in the last couple of weeks. Now, they're working mostly on the details. The one request that we have is from Brian Godereau for Durkey and K, and that's for a bond reduction.
Did we even get this? Has Green looked at it? Isn't it a little 12th hour to be talking about that?
Green has looked at it. Then, well, and it's always up to you whether or not you want to consider it.
When did they send it over?
Let's see.
Today.
Today, right?
Well, got the revised one today. We got the comments back from Green.
Yeah, there's no substantial objection from Green. Good with the ramps. I mean, I, I-
What are they asking?
Well, Brian's here, if you want him to present.
What?
Very quickly, very quickly. Brian Godereau, Hancock Associates. So, we have a bond reduction request before this board of $448,000. And what we've done is, we've taken Green's comments into consideration and revised our original bond reduction. So, there will be a standing bond of $155,400, and that's to cover the remainder of the work within K State.
My understanding of the remainder of the work is, like, striping. Most of the heavy paving is done.
Correct. So, any, basically, our revision from our original request includes as-built, and final as-built, and striping. So, it ended up being $4,200 per phase. So, there's going to be seven standing bonds for Durkey, and three on, four on K, that are $4,200. And then there will be a standing bond for the balance of K of $126,000.
And you're saying basically K's all done?
K, K is done except for Phase 4. Durkey is done.
Yeah. And we're going to have $150,000 still?
$155,400, yes.
And Green's okay with this? Maren? Yes? Okay. Does the board have any problem with that? We still have $150,000 if we need something.
Given what's left on that list.
So, I have a concern about, this wasn't able to be put on the agenda, so the members who, or, excuse me, the residents who live over on Durkey didn't have an opportunity to voice anything, so.
Uh, wait, there's a reference to that. I was just, I just had it up.
A reference to this?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, Anna.
For road acceptance.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, this is part of it.
And it's not that, we're not zeroing out the bond.
No, not at all.
So, Brian, what caused a delay for you to not get this to us till today?
So, basically, it's working through the three items that Green had identified. Two of them, again, as-built and striping, the third being wheelchair ramps and sidewalks. Chris Stoddard and myself today were actually able to resolve that, and Chris issued an email today stating that they were acceptable.
So, can you please try to get all this done ahead of time? Because having this last-minute stuff is really difficult, very challenging, puts us, puts us in a bad spot, please.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the bond reduction for Durkey and K?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
As per Green's memorandum.
As per, well, yeah, I was trying to get that. I, I can't get this thing working. Uh, yeah, as per Green's recommendations.
Anyone want to second it?
Second.
All those in favor? Jeff?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Anna?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay.
Thank you.
And I'll be, the only other, I, I did see that Chestnut was paved. We're moving forward with that, so.
Well, actually, I have a question about that. Is it the, the primary road as you drive in with a circle drive, or is it the extension of Chestnut?
Primary road. It's the, it's the shared residential driveway. I mean, it's the, it's the main road going in.
Right, it's the part of the road that's going to be intended to become a public way. That's the main road coming in and with, through the circle.
They still have a lot of exposed manhole covers and everything else, so they haven't finished paving it.
They're not requesting anything at this point.
Yeah, but they did pave it. It is, it was paved today. I went up, and it was paved today. So, anyway. Anything else? Are we good for right now?
No, I'm not.
Couple of weeks?
I have a quick question. So, Edward Drive, if they haven't put in the curb, is that something that we know they're going to finish up as well?
They haven't put in when?
About half the road needs a curb.
A curb?
Curb, curbing.
C U R B.
Oh, that's-
Is that part of it?
No, that's not on Edward Drive punch, punch list. The curbing has been inspected and, and approved.
Yeah, where's it, where do you see the outstanding curb?
So, it, it, the only way to describe it is, as, as you go around, and it's on the exit point, so it's on the, the side of, of the curb, curb, if you will.
No, I know, was there supposed to be a curb there?
Well, I don't know. That's the question. That's what I was asking. It looks like, it looks like half of it needs a curb.
I'll ask Green to weigh in on that for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else? Are we good?
Hi, this is John Babavell over on Chestnut Lane. I just wanted to make a comment before you mentioned that Chestnut's been paved. I'm here now. It's definitely not paved. They've done the reclamation work around the circle and the binder down there, but it is, it is still unpaved.
The finish coat's not on it?
The finish coat, yeah, I'm pretty sure that-
The finish coat was done.
Chestnut Lane is not asking for any vote from you this evening.
I know, I know. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I just, I assure you, it's not paved.
Who's, we're not talking about Chestnut Lane.
No. They're not asking for any money. I, I just made an observation, and I went down there. It was paved today. It would have been, the structures are in, it's paved around it. It was a lot better riding down it today than it was the other day.
On Cooper Farm?
No, Chestnut, no.
You're talking, we moved on to Chestnut now?
No, that's what, he just brought up Chestnut.
Mr. Babavell, yes.
I, okay, right, let's just go, can we stay, stay on the list? Where are we now?
No, we're all done with the list.
We're done. Well, you say Chestnut Farm is not paved?
It, it is paved, but it, it has, when I saw it yesterday, it had a lot of the manhole covers, you know, where they stick up a little bit, because it's getting ready to be repaved. That's the-
The final code's not on, you say?
Right. I don't know all the terms, but yeah.
No, it's okay. No, I know what you're saying.
Okay, might not be finished.
I do have a quick question. So, when is a Select Board hearing about these roads? And, and don't we have to, don't we, as a planning board, have to go to their hearing and provide recommendation?
I thought they have to be accepted at town vote, have to be voted by the town.
Right, final vote is at town meeting. Select Board hearing is scheduled for September 28th. Planning Department can provide input. If planning board would rather provide that input, you can schedule a meeting before the 28th, or you can let me provide the recommendation based on what I see out there, what Green sees out there, with DPW input, and there's one more. Conservation Commission has a few issues that the, that the developers are working through.
Is anyone actually asked to be on the agenda yet? Probably K and Durkey, right?
They're, they're all going, all five? Well, four or five, how, depending on how you consider them, they're all going in front of the Selectmen, my understanding, on September 28th.
Okay.
I mean, I highly recommend we get, we get this done for October vote.
Absolutely.
You want to go through a winter without an approved road, and those guys are going to have to maintain them all winter long.
Okay, well, let's see where they're at on the 28th of September, then.
Right, and then the back, back up to that is, Selectmen have, in the past, they don't like doing it, but they have in the past, met immediately before town meeting to make sure that any punch list items that are still not complete at the here, when they open their hearing are done, so they can make their recommendations.
We definitely recommend that you pay special attention at Chestnut Farm, and highly encourage them to do what they said they were going to do, since we, at least their bond continued upon that being completed.
Yep. Yep.